Could councilors take their seats? And we'll call the meeting of the Gloucester City Council for Tuesday, April 9th, to order. First, I need to say, I keep forgetting, that this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting laws. Our first order of business is a flag salute and a moment of silence. Councilor O'Hara, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our moment of silence tonight, I would like to remember Grace Latoff, who passed away this week. Grace was the wife of Tommy Latoff, and Tommy is still with us, of course, and head of the Friends of Seacoast. But Grace was a wonderful, longtime citizen of Gloucester and contributed a whole lot to the city. So our moment of silence is for Grace. Thank you. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident shall be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of the same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone for oral communications? Name and address for the record, please.
Karen Spencer, 67 Langsford Street. Counselors, 100 years ago, in 1919, American women won the right to vote. That basic civil right came after a hard-fought, 80-year battle during which those in positions of power beat and jailed generations of brave women. When the jailed suffragettes went on hunger strikes, they were restrained and violently forced-fed raw eggs and milk through rubber tubes rammed down their throats, a particularly inhumane torture that literally violated the core of their beings. Those in power justified the forced feeding as for the women's own good. Those in power saw themselves as righteous protectors of society. Those in power were disgusted with the audacity of the suffragettes who challenged policy. Those in power stripped the women of agency over their own bodies, dismissed ethics, and devalued the humanity of the suffragettes. Counselors, I'm one of many Gloucester residents who have testified to the harm caused to our bodies by the immoral medical mandate that literally forces fluoridation chemicals down our throats. I presented this council with hundreds of valid, peer-reviewed, credible studies, hundreds in aggregations and dozens individually, that document the harm caused to a significant percentage of the population from fluoride in water even at concentrations to the powers that be, consider optimal. We've testified that once fluoridation chemicals are in municipal water, they are virtually impossible to avoid and costly to try. We demand agency over our own bodies. Since January 2018, we've also demanded an opportunity to discuss the environmental and regulatory problems with fluoridation policy with the NOO and A Standing Committee, a topic which includes some incidental contamination of our watershed in Dogtown. We've jumped through all the legislative hoops that those in positions of power put in our way. Let me be perfectly clear: legislative processes and political machinations do not trump law and do not trump civil rights. Later tonight, you will be deliberating on whether to give up some city agency for Dogtown. I suggest you consider an instruction from the founding father, Patrick Henry, that applies to both fluoridation and Dogtown questions. Patrick Henry cautioned that "The Constitution is not a document for the government to restrain the people; it is an instrument for the people to restrain the government." Wisely or not, the Dogtown question before this council will be settled one way or another. However, fluoridation will not be settled so long as some members of this council use their positions of power to delay due process or deny individuals' civil rights.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communication? Yes, come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Zee Sapala, 92 Granite Street, Rockport. I'll be exceedingly brief.
Excuse me. Zeke, oral communications is for residents of Gloucester, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communication? Madam Clerk, next order of business, please. Oh, sorry. Yes, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sheila Ryder.
And speak right into the microphone, Sheila, just like that. There you go.
Okay, Sheila Ryder, and I live at 64 Riverview Road. Now, most of you would find it hard to visit me because you would have to go over the potholes, and I'm really here to discuss the potholes. We have tried several years, and the potholes exist. We currently have two people, two residents, who are filling the potholes. I don't think that you should spend a lot of money in your taxes, because I just wrote that building yesterday, and have to go and fill your own potholes. I know there has been some discussion back and forth, but we have here a map, and it shows Riverview Road as a public road. Now, I don't know how it happens that you can change from public to private without discussing it with the people who live there. I don't, I don't know. But this is clearly private, I mean, public, and it was Riverview Landing, and it was signed in 1962 by the Gloucester Planning Board. It's one of several. The head of the Department of Public Works, was it Mike Hale? He said, he did write to one of my neighbors saying that he had a good survey, as opposed to that we don't have a good survey. I know when I bought this house, I bought it from my aunt's. It was in the family for many years. It was my grandparents' house. And I think I have a good survey, too, but we have not been able to see Mr. Hale's survey. I have asked several times, and not him, but we have made, you know, one of the councilors, we've asked, "Please, could we see this survey? Maybe it is better than ours." But if we don't see it, and we have, one of the people here considered hiring an attorney to see if it's possible, if an attorney would take this on a contingency basis for those of us who live on this street, or many other streets, too. I went just a few streets down from my street and turned, made a left-hand turn. The street there that I came to was Blueberry Lane. You can't drive on that road. You have to, it's, it's just one series of potholes. I don't think that that speaks well for our city. I mean, I know this city. I was born here. I grew up here. I went to school here. I was thrilled to be coming back, but it's, it's, the pothole situation is really a little scary because somebody could trip and fall and hurt themselves, and I don't know, this is a litigious society, and who knows what could happen. So maybe we're here to, I guess I'm here to ask you, and I know there are other people who've come tonight, too, to ask you, please to help us, do something about us. Now, we did meet last year with Vali Gilman and Steve LeBlanc, and we thought that somebody was going to do something, but this year, the potholes are bad, as bad, if not worse, than they were before. So we're hoping that somebody can do something. It's a, it's a real problem for us. I love living back in Gloucester. I love living in my grandparents' old house. It means a lot to me and a lot to my grandchildren.
Okay, thank you very much, Sheila.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else for oral communication on a matter not on our agenda? For oral communication? Is there anyone else for oral communication? No, just oral communication is something that you wish to bring to the city's attention, without rebuttal. Anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order is the confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you. Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you. We have a couple of appointments this evening. The first is the Capital Improvement Advisory Board, Howard Ted Costa, and ordinance and administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Howard Ted Costa to the Capital Improvement Advisory Board, term to expire 2/14/22, an ISO move.
Second.
And Ted is here.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comment, questions? Simple majority, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ted.
Next, we have the Records Management Advisory Board, Carol A. Kelly. Ordnance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Carol A. Kelly to the Records Management Advisory Board, term to expire 2/14/22. And Carol, there she is.
Moved and seconded?
Did I move it?
I moved. Thank you very much, Carol. Simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And next?
The Tourism Commission with Kimberly Voltero. Ordnance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Kimberly Voltero to the Tourism Commission, term to expire 2/14/22, an ISO move.
Second.
And Kim, are you here? Oh, she was on, she's on vacation this week. I know Kim very well. She's a large member on the board over at the Elks. She's a very active member over there, so I told her that I would speak for her tonight, and I think she should be an excellent member on the Tourism Commission.
Very good. Anybody else? Thank you. Simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Anything else? Councilor LeBlanc?
That's it.
Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the consent agenda and unanimous consent calendar.
Anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Nothing? I'll ask for a motion to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And also, we have a one-item unanimous consent agenda. Anyone want to pull that?
Is that moved?
Moved and, moved. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of April 4th.
Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, one, two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to accept donation to the Cape Ann Office of Veteran Services for a total of $387, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
We want to thank everybody that made the donations to the Cape Ann Veterans Office.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? The simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next?
The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to approve SA 32 in the amount of $90,000 for the purpose of funding building, maintenance, improvements to the O'Malley Innovation Middle School HVAC system, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you have a narrative for us?
The O'Malley School, which was built as a closed system with fixed windows and has a central cooling system consisting of two chillers. This funding will enable the DPW to replace one of the two chillers necessary to have a full online cooling system for the school.
Thank you. Any council questions or comments on that one? So this is a supplemental appropriation, this roll-call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Heck?
Yes.
Councilor Holgrum?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
The motion for supplemental appropriation, 2019 SA 32, in the amount of $90,000 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Councilor Cox, another one?
The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to approve SA 33 in the amount of $90,000, sorry, for the purpose of funding various capital improvements that include Stacy Boulevard, Walkway improvements, ADA assessment, and garden irrigation, and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Narrative?
The $90,000 appropriation, while for two different projects, both requested by the DPW to be funded through the Capital Project Stabilization Fund, are presented together due to timing for improvements to the Elizabeth Gordon Smith Garden and the completion of the city's ADA transition plan. With the, with the completion of this required plan, the city will become eligible for grant funding for up to $500,000 to execute ADA changes for areas that were identified by the plan.
Thank you. Any questions, councilors, comments? Roll-call vote?
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Heck?
Yes.
Councilor Holgrum?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Supplemental appropriation, 2019 SA 33, in the amount of $90,000 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Is that all, Councilor Cox?
It is. I have one public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Is the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of April 1st.
There are no matters at this moment. Great, thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of April 3rd.
Councilor Gilman?
Thank you, Councilor. Just one motion, on a motion by the Planning and Development Committee, we voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council permit the withdrawal of City Council 2019-013 Lombard establishment of an ad hoc advisory committee regarding assisted-living residents at Gloucester Crossing without prejudice, and I so move.
Oh, moved and seconded. Yes, that's just a withdrawal?
Yes, thank you.
I guess that's a simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
In my second item?
Yes.
Is not a motion, but just a reminder to the city council that we will be having a site visit on Thursday, April 11th, at 3 o'clock at Fuller Street, number 356, the former, 356, 355?
35.
Oh.
(laughing).
Thank you. And it's the former site of Tony's Pizza and Six Apartment Buildings. There's a special permit to exceed the maximum allowable height to 40 feet, to decrease minimum lot area, and decrease minimum open space per dwelling unit, and we thought it would be wise to have a site visit. So if any of you can come, it would be great. 3 o'clock, meet at the corner, right in front of the building, or the former building, and any members of the public that want to come to listen, they can, but reminder that it's not to deliberate, it's just to ask questions of the applicant. So thank you, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is public hearing 2019-015, rezoning application 2019-001, rezoning of property located at 28 Rockport Road, assesses map 178 lot 28 from EB to R10 medium-high-density residence.
So I'll open the public hearing and continue this matter till our meeting of April 23rd. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Is public hearing 2019-016, loan order 2019-002, loan authorization, the amount of $190,000 to pay costs of permanent repairs, including paving to Southern Road, a private way in the city.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing for this and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any council questions as to the technicalities of this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to approve a loan authorization of $190,000 to pay the costs of permanent repairs, including paving to Southern Road, a private way in the city, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to give the narrative, or shall Councilor Memhard?
I thought Mike was going to come up and explain it, but I mean, it's
Oh, he can, he can do that.
It's just funding to make the repairs on a private road that the group has
Obviously, the, the process of getting here has exhausted them so much that they're, they're staying at home to wait for the paving contractor to arrive, but
Right. So, so unless anybody has any questions of Mike, this is one of the road improvements under our new ordinance where we kind of streamlined the process. Go ahead, Councilor.
If I could just make the observation, Mike can weigh in here, but I'd like to thank, in particular, the residents, Betsy Works, Stephen Schmidt, and Dr. Mike Stelludo, for being the point people for this neighborhood betterment paving project. Councilor O'Hara and I have worked carefully with this group, about 26 residents, 26 lots, maybe 20 residents, to get, to address these pothole problems on Southern Road, which is a private road, but it's used for public access. And it's a long process. We've had a number of meetings with city administration and with the neighbors, and this is the culmination of that process, requesting a loan order. It will then proceed with the work to be done, and then these residents will be paying for these betterment with their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments on this one? So I would like to thank councilors Memhard and O'Hara for this. These are, we're kind of learning our way through this, and a lot, needs a lot of councilor input, and they were very helpful, and the residents, I'm sure, are very appreciative. And this is a betterment that is for a private road, that the city will front the money for, and the residents will pay back the city as a betterment fee with their real estate taxes, so. So it's a roll-call vote. Joan?
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Heck?
Yes.
Councilor Holgrum?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes, please.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
The loan authorization 2019-002, in the amount of $190,000, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Is public hearing 2019-017, to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Waterways, Section 10-52, use of public landings by adding a new subsection C kayak and paddleboard storage, and reletter the remaining subsections and insert the language in storage of kayaks and paddleboards in relettered subsection H.
I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this TJ Shimitaro, our harbor master, welcome, come to the podium, and just identify yourself for the record.
Thomas Shimitaro, harbor master, resident of 87 Denison Street. After being approached by, by being approached by a variety of boaters that frequently use public landings, and talking to the Manchester Harbor Master, we decided it'd be a good idea to add some kayak racks to some of our public landings to increase usage for people to get out on the water. Currently, people do store kayaks in various places throughout the city with, you know, unintended consequences. Tides come up, kayaks go to sea. We assume people are missing when they're not, so this will kind of kill two birds and one stone. It's a small nominal fee we've proposed of $100 to maintain and build and maintain the kayak racks. They'll be provided at a variety of public landings, Lanes Cove, Magnolia, potentially Corliss Landing, and in Rocky Neck. So we, we feel this is a, is a, is a good thing overall for the city, for people that don't want to pack up their paddleboards and kayaks every time to try to get on the water. Can be cumbersome, so. Any questions?
Councilor O'Hara?
Thank you, TJ. Could you just explain for everyone, as far as you mentioned the present situation, people leave kayaks, canoes on the shorefront.
Sure.
Tide comes in.
Sure.
They go, they go to see what happens.
Absolutely. So people often think that they, they put their kayak in a public landing. Some of our public landings are kind of hidden throughout the city. People put their kayaks on shore. We have an astronomical high tide. Tide comes in, kayaker paddleboard goes out to sea. It's unidentified. The Coast Guard, local law enforcement, harbor masters assume unmanned drift is someone was attached to that. I think last year alone, in this district, it cost taxpayers, on the federal and state side, around $6.5 million for air assets, boats, personnel, people looking, and generally they're not attached or had anything to do with it. So we will require, if you are in one of these kayak rack spaces, you'll have, if found, sticker with your name and address on it, be part of the requirement. So we try to cut back on frivolous searches, as well as give people a place to store their kayaks on city property. So it's a, it's a win-win, really.
Thank you.
Councilor Cox?
How are you going to award the, the spots for the kayak racks?
So this is kind of a trial-by-error deal, but we're hoping to have enough kayak spots for however many people want to use them, but for instance, if Lanes Cove, we just, we put 20 spots down there, two racks, they each hold 10 apiece, and we put it out. I plan on putting it in the Gloucester Times, on every city Facebook page, have the ward councilors spread the word. If 30 people come and we only have 20 spots, we'll have a lottery system, just like the ordinance or the Waterways regulations for like a new dinghy dock or a public landing area, or potentially due to, you know, if we have the funding, we'll put another rack or the space to put it. So we'll try to accommodate, after they're all full, there'll be a waitlist, just like a mooring waitlist for a specific area, or a dinghy dock throughout the city. You'll just go on a waitlist, like everything else.
Yes, Councilor Gilman?
Thank you. So follow-up question to that, will that spot be allowed to be passed down if a family member has it, or does it start fresh if a person is no longer interested in keeping it from year to year?
It will fall in line with the rest of our regulations as far as mooring, so you will be able to pass the spot down. The only spot that you can't pass down in the city is Lobster Cove. It's a federal project area. It falls in line with the Fair and Equitable Act that the Army Corps established. It's a CFR. I can't remember it off the top of my head, but as far as all of our other areas, it'll, you could pass it down, potentially, father to son, or mother to daughter, immediate up or down.
Any other questions? Thank you. TJ, anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
No communications. Any other council questions as to technicalities? I will close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you. Ordnance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Waterways Administration, Section 10-52, use of public landing as follows. I'm going to not read the whole ordinance, I'm just going to read the new subsection that we put in, because that's the only thing that's changed. Everything else has been in there for quite a long time. So the new change in that ordinance would be subsection C. So the new change in that ordinance would be subsection C, kayak and paddleboard storage. The harbor master may permit the seasonal storage of kayaks and paddleboards of appropriate size to be stored in racks provided by the Waterways Board, and a portion of any public landing, so designated by the Waterways Board, provided that the fee set forth below has been paid, such permitted vessel shall be marked by an official sticker on the aft top portion of the kayak or paddleboard, and that was the only change, is that new added subsection, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Any Counselor comments? Counselor Holmgren.
I'm happy to support this. I thank the harbor master once again for his creative solution to this problem. I'm happy that this will be saving the taxpayers' money and also making kayaking more attractive to everybody who lives here. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
I also wanted to send kudos to the harbor master and the Waterways Board on this one. So, there were two reasons why I think this is important. One is, this is part of aging in place, and we actually had a collaborative session with Steve Winslow about two years ago at Lanesville Community Center, and this is one of the items that the seniors identified as, would be really positive. And further, a group of Lanes Cove folks recently, right around the time that the harbor master was thinking of bringing this forward, had all gotten together to say they really wanted one of these at Lanes Cove. So we're really excited, because he was already one step ahead, and it's been very well supported in my ward, and I'm really excited about it, I think it's a great thing. So I will be supporting this, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and I guess we'll have a roll call vote. Oh, quarter of us, I'm sorry, then it's simple majority. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is public hearing 2008, 2019-01-8, to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Division 8, Human Rights Commission, Section 2-499, purposes subsection 2, and Section 2-500, powers and duties subsection 3.
Thank you, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak in favor. Donna? Just for the record, identify yourself, thank you.
I'm Donna Lee, I'm the Human Resources Director.
Down the mic, right, invite it.
And you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, I was requested to evaluate a proposal that the mayor had received for a Disabilities Rights Commission over the summer. I had a young intern, I was very fortunate to have a young intern working for me this past summer, who was able to investigate the issue. And as much as we support, and we will be proceeding with the Disabilities Rights Ordinance, we thought, first things first, we noted that our current ordinance establishing a Human Rights Commission has been inactivated, and the mayor was very, very clear that she's in support for equal rights and promoting diversity throughout the city, and for protecting the rights of all members of any protected class, and that regards anyone, not only because of disability status, but also race, color, national origin, age, religion, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, genetic information, marital status, and veterans' rights. We found, as we researched the matter, that we had an ordinance that was originally established back in the 1990s, but it's been largely inactive ever since. So the mayor had asked me to take a look at what it would take to reactivate the Human Rights Commission as a baseline before we expand into Disabilities Rights or specific other task forces for specific members of any specific protected class. And so I have done that, and we, we, we feel that this is a really positive direction for our city to take. We have zero tolerance for discrimination of any kind, or harassment of any kind, and we want to reestablish our standards of civility and respect for all people throughout the city. So we feel very strongly that this commission is going to stand for that, and has a lot of very positive work to do going forward. In evaluating our current ordinance, the ordinance is fine as it exists, but I did recommend a couple of revisions as I looked at what was there, and that's what's before you as city council tonight. One, under the purposes of the Human Rights Commission, we noted, under purposes, item number two, proposing a modification, because it sounded like the original ordinance offered voluntary mediation in a public, in a public forum. Well, that really isn't going to work. So, we were clear in going forward that mediation would be offered by the Human Rights Commission, but that any such service would be provided in a confidential setting, and that really the purpose of this commission is not to do mediation in a public forum, but to refer for appropriate resolution and to use the resources that we have available in our community. The second modification that I recommended, and that's before you tonight, is, again, under powers and duties, number two, our new, excuse me, powers and duties, number three, we have deleted the power for hearing complaints and answers there too, in matters of alleged discrimination, and to resolve such complaints by mediation. We have, I am proposing that we eliminate that and substitute language, that we would provide a public forum in which citizens may identify specific barriers that may prevent them from taking advantage of city programs, policies, and facilities, and the commission may then advise the mayor on any recommended corrective action. So those were the two key amendments that I'm recommending, but I certainly welcome the support of the city council for the reactivation of this Human Rights Commission, and I think it'll be very well served throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. We'll just run through the drill, and then if anybody has any questions for Donna. First, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Okay, any Counselor questions on the technicalities? Counselor Cox.
Are the members of this commission going to be appointed and run through O&amp;A like all the other commissions?
Yes. Donnie?
And do we have to wait the 30 days before we announce people, to people that they can apply through the mayor's office, or?
You mean the 30 days till this becomes, I think, go ahead, Donna.
Those are very good questions. I think, yes, I'm familiar with the 30 days. The ordinance as it stands is still in existence, so I think we are welcoming applications for those folks who want to serve on this commission, and that we need not wait a full 30 days before such appointments, but that these rules that you would vote on tonight would become effective in 30 days for those two amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, we will call the, we'll close the public hearing, call for the committee report. Counselor LeBlanc.
Thank you. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Division 8, Human Rights Commission, Section 2-499, purposes subsection 2, and Section 2-500, powers of duties subsection 3, as follows. So like Donna said a little while ago, the ordinance is just being updated and just changing some verbiage. So, Section 2-499, purposes subsection 2, assist persons in the city who believe that their human rights, human or civil rights, as defined by existing local, commonwealth, and federal law, have been violated in the city by offering voluntary and independent mediation for all parties concerned in a confidential setting, and information such people of the local, commonwealth, and federal agencies available to address their grievances, and Section 2-500, powers of duties subsection 3, to provide a public forum in which citizens may identify specific barriers that may prevent them from taking advantage of city programs, policies, and facilities. The commission may advise the mayor or any recommended corrective actions, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments from Counselors? An ordinance change, simple majority, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is public hearing 2019-01-9, whether or not to endorse the application of the Gloucester Historical Commission to submit the City of Gloucester properties collectively known as Dogtown for consideration for listing as a National Register of Historic Places.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing, but before we start, a couple of comments. We've had, obviously, yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Gilman.
Thank you.
Would you like to have the mic?
Yes, so, as in a butter to the, to the boundary of the piece of property that is being considered, I'm going to be recusing myself under MGL, Chapter 268a, and I will be sitting in the audience until such time that you vote, and then I will come back and join my colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor. So, before we start, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, this is a tremendous turnout, and thank you, everybody, for coming, and I think that we can make a presumption here, that everyone who has shown up tonight is here because we all believe in protecting this very important asset of Dogtown, and so thank you for coming and participating in that effort. We have a proposal from the Gloucester Historic Commission to make an application to the state, and then ultimately the federal government, to put Dogtown on the National Register of Historic Places, and the Historic Commission will make a presentation about that process and about why they think that such a designation is in our benefit. You know, because there are so many of us who really care about Dogtown, I don't want this to devolve into a for and against thing. The council will take up the, we will, and we will vote on the matter of, of having, whether to submit the Historic Commission's application, but we're all here because we really support Dogtown. Director, Public Works Director Hale is going to speak in opposition of the National Register application, and will summarize that, that position. However, he's also going to do something else that, that we, the council, have asked him to do, and he has, and specifically Counselor Gilman, who's been working on the issue of Dogtown for a long time, we've asked him to advise us on a Dogtown management plan that the city can engage in, so whether or not we go to the National Registry of Historic Places, we're going to have a plan that protects Dogtown and all of the things that it does. So what we're going to do, slightly different from our usual procedure, I'm going to ask Historic Commission, oh, and I should say that, so within the city itself, we do not have a city position, the mayor has not taken a position on this at this time, so we're going to hear basically the debate within the city group about this issue. Then we, and so after the Historic Commission and Mr. Hale make their presentations, we will hear from anybody and everybody in the public who wishes to speak. You can speak for the registry, you can speak against it, you can speak against the registry and for the management plan, or for encouraging us to consider a management plan, whatever moves you, we would be happy to hear everyone who's here tonight speak about this issue. So with that, and I have to say one other thing, so Mary Ellen LaPianca will be speaking for the Historic Commission. And, oh, Bill Remson will, okay, and they'll have up to 15 minutes. Mike Hale will speak, will raise the opposition to the registry, will have up to 15 minutes, but he will also make a presentation on the management plan. After that, we will open it up for public comment. Everyone, I'm going to have to strictly limit the three-minute rule, and everybody can see why we're going to do that tonight, and so we will go forward, and after we hear from everyone, we will then close the public hearing and deliberate about the National Registry. So if we're all good with that, I'm going to invite the Gloucester Historic Commission to make its presentation on whether to, on its, on the proposal to make an application to have Dogtown considered for listing on the National Registry, and Bill, if you'd identify yourself.
Mr. Chairman, can you just give us a second to get this sorted out?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Yep. So I will open the public hearing with all the commentary we had before, and again, you'll have your ti-
Would I be able to introduce the members?
You absolutely will, you can do whatever you'd like. This is your, your 15 minutes, so.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the nomination of Dogtown to the National Register of Historic Places. Louder? Is that better? Right up to the microphone.
Comes to the mic, really make sure you're speaking right into it.
Could I ask the Gloucester Historic Commission to stand, please? I'd like to introduce them, Sandy Berry, Bob Whitmarsh, co-chairman, Mary Ellen LaPianca, co-chairman, Jude Semenara, and that's all we have tonight. Thank you. Okay. My name is Bill Remson, I live at 23 River Road in Gloucester with my family, and I'm on the Gloucester Historic Commission as well. I'm a registered architect with over 40 years' experience in historic preservation projects, and I agree with what the, with Paul Lombard said, we're all here because we love Dogtown. And I really don't think any of us want to develop it or do any kind of crazy things with Dogtown. Thank you. But the big issue really is what, what to do with Dogtown, and how to protect it. That's really what we should spend our time on, our resources and our leadership on. There's so much to do. I would like to quote a recent letter to the Gloucester paper, talking about this registration listing for Dogtown. Quote, sadly, the opposition is based on fear rather than facts and claims that are just not true. I hope this meeting can help clarify that. The National Register listing really is a relatively small thing. It doesn't change things, and it doesn't have any teeth, but it is a tool for the proper stewardship of Dogtown. Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's, okay. So, who are we? We're a group of volunteers appointed by the mayor. Our mission is to promote historic preservation, to make people aware of historically significant resources, and to preserve the city's character and cultural heritage for posterity. What is the National Register of Historic Places? It's a list, simply a list of significant historic places in America. The register was established in 1966 in reaction to the massive destruction of heritage by developers and by the federal and state urban renewal programs. There are more than 93,000 places and sites on the register today. What are some of the local listings? Gloucester already has 35 listings, including three National Registered Districts. Gloucester already has 35 listings, including three National Register districts. Gloucester listings include the Schooner Adventure, the First Parish Burial Grounds, the FitzHenry Lane House, and in fact, this building, Gloucester City Hall. I come to City Hall a lot to go to meetings like this and pay my taxes, and I don't see a lot of tourists here. But what is Dogtown? I think we all know what it is, but for the sake of discussion, I'll talk about it. Dogtown is mostly undeveloped land in Gloucester and Rockport, including conservation land, public land for open space and recreation, and of critical importance, the watersheds and reservoirs for Gloucester's drinking water. As many have said, Dogtown is the heart of Cape Ann. How is Dogtown significant to our history? Cape Ann was one of the first English settlements in America, the remains of a colonial village are in Dogtown. Other features, such as the Babson Boulder Trail, are associated with artists and stories about our past. The Massachusetts Historic Commission has officially stated that Dogtown is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Mike Hale, who will talk in a while, head of DPW, in a recent letter to the city council has written, quote, "There should be no question that Dogtown is historical and worthy of protection." I'm sure we can all agree on that. How is Dogtown defined as a district? Dogtown includes 2,057 acres that meet the technical criteria for defining National Register districts. The results of a 2018 archaeological and historical survey, which explains how the boundaries were drawn, are posted to our webpage. Everyone should go look at this report, it's very interesting and very well done. This, this is the area defined for the Dogtown National Register District in the center of Cape Ann. These two detailed maps show the area selected for the listing. On the right, areas in Gloucester are shown in pink and in Rockport in blue. The National Register nomination proposal was developed through a collaboration between the Gloucester and Rockport's historical commissions. We want to thank Rockport, all the, so all our friends in Rockport for all of their hard work and support. Mary Ellen will continue this.
I get to say a few words, and then Bill will come back, but the main question that I keep receiving is what are the benefits of being listed? And basically, first of all, it is an honor, it calls attention to the significance and value of Dogtown, and the need to pay more attention to preserving it for future generations. National Register listing also makes Dogtown more eligible for grants, because being, having National Register status makes the area attractive to potential donors and potential granting agencies, whatever they may be. Some state and federal grants, such as the Save or Preserve America's Treasures grant, are earmarked for places that are listed on the National Register, so it's simply another Are there other benefits to listing? And there are, yes. Other potential benefits include federal and state tax preservation credits for municipalities, for nonprofit organizations, and for commercial owners. Why not just leave things the way they are? Well, this does leave things the way they are. National Register listing does not change anything. City resources are tight, and they probably always will be. National Register listing has the potential to attract additional funding to help out. We've heard the complaint that there may be strings attached to grants. Are there strings? You know, of course there are. Grants are public money, if they're coming from the state or the federal government, that is public money that we pay for with our taxes, and so municipalities have to be held to certain standards in how they use that money, including avoiding, avoiding doing harm to public resources. Any project in Dogtown conducted with public funds is subject to review, such as an environmental impact assessment. Being listed on the National Register would not change that one bit. A project in the National Register district would trigger a historical impact assessment as well. The review may recommend ways to prevent or mitigate harm to historical resources, but those recommendations are not binding. And the point here is that the strings are already there with any federal or state grant, and National Register status does not impact that at all. In what ways might Dogtown be helped? This is a list of the things that we've heard about, that people have. Dogtown has been massively helped by generations of citizen volunteers. Here are some of the ideas that we've heard that other people have about what they would like to see happen in Dogtown. Whether any of those things will happen will depend on the people in this room and their local governments, and has nothing to do with National Register listing. Are private owners in a National Register district restricted in any way? No, they are not. National Register listing has no restrictions or requirements for the private owners that are in the district. Does listing affect the ability to buy, sell, or insure a property? No. National Register listing has no impact on any of those things.
Sure, hold on, one second, can you back up one slide?
I just, I just want to read the last sentence.
Sorry, I was going too fast.
Okay. Go ahead, Mary Ellen.
Do you want me to read the slide?
Please read it into the microphone.
Can listing affect the buying, selling, and insuring of property?
The slide before.
The slide before, okay. Are private owners restricted in any way? No, National Register status carries no restrictions or requirements. This is different from a local historic district, such as you have in the downtown. A local historic district does have restrictions, it's a different type of district. A National Register district does not have any such restrictions or regulations. The only exception is if somebody takes a tax preservation credit on their taxes, and that might trigger a review to make sure that you're not committing fraud, and otherwise there's simply no, no restriction.
Thank you. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, continue, please.
Okay, I think we did this one, and I have to make sure that I stop at the right point. Is this the right point? All right, thank you.
Okay, the next question is, does listing interfere with the activities of the Cape Ann Sportsman's Club? No, short answer. The Sportsman's Club is not even within the boundaries of the proposed National Register district. The National Register listing does not require any change of use, so there would be no impact on club members' activities in Dogtown, inside or outside of club property. Moving the compost facility, building a visitor's center, these, the National Register nomination has nothing to do with these ideas that have been suggested by others. Any changes to Dogtown would have to go through the existing government rules and procedures with city council approval. Won't National Register status increase tourism? Not necessarily. Research shows that tourism does not increase automatically with listing. A site has to be advertised and facilities have to be provided. The National Park Service only features state and national parks as tourist destinations on its website. Listing on the National Register would not make Dogtown a park of any kind. Won't National Register status create traffic and parking problems? Not necessarily. Other cities and towns in Massachusetts with similar sites report no increase in traffic, parking problems, or visitors by virtue of National Register listing alone. That's important, that last part. Gloucester does not have to provide any new parking or visitor services. Won't we lose local control of Dogtown? No. We already follow existing state laws and, and federal laws and regulations. State and federal grants do have their own requirements, their own red tape, but such grants are optional. Gloucester never has to accept such money or even apply for it if it doesn't want to. As already mentioned, when federal or state money is used on a National Register site, there is a historical impact assessment. If there is no risk to the heritage, the project simply proceeds. If there is potential risk, this review makes recommendations to mitigate the potential damage to the listed heritage. But if there are no alternatives, the project can then proceed, even if the heritage is But hopefully, all the preservation options have been considered. Remember, our goal here is to protect the heritage, our heritage, your heritage, Gloucester's heritage. I don't see that this could be a problem. It certainly is not losing control of Dogtown, it's helping to protect it. Remember, any changes to Dogtown would have to go through the city council and other established I don't, I also, I think it's worth mentioning that the unprotected land in Dogtown, and there is some, could be either sold or used in ways that many people would not like. I'm sure no one in this audience or at this, at this table would ever suggest such a thing, but it's theoretically possible. So I, I think it's very important that the city be encouraged to place permanent conservation restrictions on all Dogtown land. That would really help protect Dogtown from development. Won't National Register listing, won't National Register listing change or ruin Dogtown? No, nothing will change, unless you all here want to do it. We want to thank all of these groups, especially Rockport's, who have already worked closely with us on this nomination. I would like to quote from two recent letters from City of Gloucester departments in support of this listing. Fire chief of the City of Gloucester Fire Department has written, "The fire department has no objection to this nomination. I see this as a positive impact for public safety overall, and cannot find any data to suggest otherwise." The director of the Gloucester Health Department has written, "It is our hope that the National Register designation of Dogtown will provide an important stepping stone in the community's efforts to gain funding for increased public outreach and education initiatives, improving trail systems, supporting natural resources restoration efforts, and adding public amenities, encouraging safe and healthy use of the area." I couldn't say it any better.
So, Bill, so we've reached the end of the 15 minutes, and I know there's-
And I am ready, ready to sum up, just give me one second. We want to protect Dogtown, that's our goal, and we request that the city council forward Dogtown's nomination, nomination to the Massachusetts Historical Commission and the State Review Board, which is the next step in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't leave the podium first. Again, we, this is a little unusual, and before we move on to the next step, because there's so much information here, I just want to give, I'll give councilors a couple of opportunities to ask questions, so this will be one of them, if anybody has any questions. Now, of course, there'll be plenty of opportunity to ask questions as we move along, but is there anybody who has anything they want to ask to the Historic Commission at this time? Yes, Councilor Hecht.
Thank you. My experience has been the bulk of the financial incentive to be on the National Historic Register has been the tax credits. Those tax credits are based on improving usually a historic structure, and it's a very convoluted, complicated, full employment act for lawyers to get that tax credit through. Are there structures that are in Dogtown that you feel are to be rehabbed?
I, Dogtown is mostly undeveloped, and so that, those kinds of tax credits are, are more appropriate to downtown Gloucester Historic District than to Dogtown. Those tax credits really are to encourage commerce and, and business activity, and Dogtown doesn't have that, doesn't have those opportunities.
That's what I thought, thank you. Secondly, what is the magnitude of the financial grant potential? I mean, can you give us a feel for, what are we, are we talking about, you know, hundreds of dollars, thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions? Like, how much money, if we do this, how does it work?
The Preserve, the Preserve America's Treasures grants go up to, into the millions, the federal grants that are for National Register districts, and, but it's all over the map, and there are nonprofit organizations that are interested in this that also might apply for grants, that might want to have a project in Dogtown, Green Belt might want to do a project in Dogtown. National Register status alone does not have any money, you know, or bring any money, it's just a, an increase in the potential for attracting funds, and those funds could come from anywhere, private donation, nonprofits, state or federal, but there is big money if you can win a federal grant, if you're going to preserve America's treasures in Dogtown.
And is, in your research, you've done a lot of research, I haven't had the ability to do that.
Yeah, four years now.
But in, in your opinion, what percentage of the total grant money, foundation money, other monies available are truly dependent on being on the National Historic Register?
A very, very small amount.
Well, I mean, Save America's, Save America's Treasures, you have to be on the National Register, and, and, I mean, and they give, I know of them giving up to a million dollars to individual, to an individual building.
Right.
And are you aware of a series of people and entities and foundations and government agencies that will also give grants, and even if you're not on the National Historic Register?
Yes, I think so.
Well, I'll, let me just say that being on the National Register is a stamp of approval, so to speak. It is an official acknowledgement that it's historically important and significant on a national basis. It's not just something that people say is great.
And worth preserving, and the grants also go to landscape, not just structures.
Thank you.
Any other councilor questions at this time? Councilor Memhard, then Councilor LeBlanc.
Clearly, Dogtown plays a very important role in terms of our public watershed, and it has a unique historical significance because of the Roger Babson Boulder Trail. I'm curious, I really don't know the answer to these two questions, but if at some point in the future, the, the City of Gloucester determined that it would be beneficial to conduct some controlled burns in Dogtown to restore part of the landscape to what it was 100 years ago, would that be impacted one way or the other, in your opinion?
Being on the National Register would not affect that. If you decided to do that, there would be not, nothing to prevent you.
I'm just looking for-
I think there might be a review to make sure that you weren't going to burn the boulders, or burn the cellar holes.
We did that at Whale's Tail already.
(laughing).
The other question is, if at some point in the future, and I don't know that this is in any way likely, but it's just, again, in the future, if the City of Gloucester or Rockport were interested in erecting a wind turbine in Dogtown, would this National Registry designation impact our flexibility or choice in, in a wind turbine installation?
The, if you put the foot of the wind turbine into one of the historic cellar holes, they would ask you to move it over a few feet, otherwise you can do whatever you want.
That, that's what I thought, thank you.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you. Mary Ellen, you've said several times historical resources that are in Dogtown. Can you explain what historical, what your definition of a historical resource is in Dogtown?
It's actually not my definition, it's the definition of the National Park Service and the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It's not a matter of our personal opinion, we're going by official documents and professional standards that we've learned as, as members of the Historical Commission. And there are four major criteria for determining historical significance. One is age or antiquity, another one is the association of a place with a significant person or event in the history of a community, another one is its association with a significant architect or builder in, in, in history, and, what's the fourth one? There are four altogether, but those are the criteria that are applied, more than one may apply, and in the case of Dogtown, three of the four criteria for- More than one may apply, and in the case of Dogtown, three of the four criteria for nomination apply.
All right, thank you. I have your application. I read all 122 pages.
Good.
I appreciate that, but I still, I, I'd like to know what the historical resources that you stated were.
The resources are Dogtown Common, all those cellar holes, the people's pastures, their trails, where they had their sheep, their pigs, the mill, there's a 1642 mill site there, the Babson Boulders, the Cooperage House, the walls, the stone walls. Those are all things that are associated with either the colonial development, which went for 150 years between the late 17th century and around 1840, or the Babson legacy. Those are the two main historical elements. Not all of the things in Dogtown are contributing to the nomination. For example, the railroad tracks are in the district, but they are not features that contribute to the historicity, the historical significance of the site, and they would not be considered. So, there would be no review triggered for any work done on Babson Reservoir because it is not a contributing property. There would be no review for any work done relating to the railroad tracks, and there are other things that were in that report, and they're called non-contributing, so that would not trigger any reviews. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add one?
Just, uh, and one more question. You guys touched about grants a few times and talked about receiving monies. I went on to the National Register of Historic Places website and looked at some frequently asked questions, and one of them was about accepting money. And then one of the last sentences about, about it, it said, "If federal monies are attached to the property, then any change to the property have to allow an advisory council on historic preservation to comment on this project."
Right, that's the review process.
So, we will have a third, so even though we own the land, we will have to have a third-party review, things that we will do?
Any, any owner in the district that's making changes would have a review by that, they usually send it to us locally to do it. It's passed down the line from the federal government to the state, and then the state usually asks us to go and look. Is this project going to destroy something of historical value? And we write a letter saying, yes, and here's some ideas on how to avoid that, or we write a letter saying, no, we don't think it will affect the intellect, the historical significance or integrity of the area. And that's, that's it. And then you do what you want anyway.
Right, but a third, a third party will have to weigh in on anything the city would look--
But, but--
It would be the, the, an outside third party, between the city.
We, we have been tasked with doing these reviews for properties here in the city that receive federal grants, like work that was being done on the railroad. We were asked if the proposed interventions would affect anything historical, and we said, no.
No.
So, go ahead.
Same for the railroad bridge. We, the federal government asked us to report on the historical impact of replacing the railroad bridge. And, sure, it's taking away something that's historical, but it had to happen, and the only thing we required was a, a full documentation for our records for posterity. So, there is a thumb drive with photographs of the original train, bridge, all of its parts. I don't even know how to describe these things, all of the stuff that was underneath there, so that it's a record of an old, and that's, that's, I guess I'll shut up.
Councillor Cox?
Does that answer the question?
Yes and no. What you're talking about is private property or property that's owned by someone else, and there, the registry is asking for an independent review, which is the City of Gloucester. In this instance, City of Gloucester owns it, so why would they go to a board appointed by the city to ask if the city is doing something appropriately? So, my fear on the, the city-owned property being reviewed by a, a city-appointed board is that they would bring in a different committee to do the review. And in my opinion, I think they should, because I don't believe that a city-appointed board should be approving or disproving or weighing in on a city project. So, that's my concern. And, second of all, I had sent an email asking for examples of the grants that you said we could apply for, so I could review them for any conditions based on the, the concern that they would have conditions in them that would prevent us from doing things or developing. And I never got a response to my email or examples of grants, so I'm, I'm not sure what that means as far as willingness to share information.
The, the thing is, who did you contact?
I, I sent it to you.
The NPS? The NP, the what?
No, I sent it to you directly.
To me?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't get it.
Okay, I can, I can forward that.
They did not receive that communication, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Send it again.
Well, it's kind of past the point at this time.
I, we haven't researched the grants because our goal was not to apply for grants. Our goal was to enable the city to apply for grants if it wished. And so, it was just giving more opportunity, more options for finding grant money. It's, there's not a lot, I mean, I haven't researched, I don't know how much money is out there. I just know of certain things, like the Saving America's Treasures. That is a federal grant for national registered properties, and it's good money. So, that's one source.
Less concerned about the, the money that could possibly come in versus the conditions.
Well, you're, you're thinking about the strings again.
Out of time on the slideshow here, telling us the pros and cons, and one of them is grants. So, therefore, examples of the grants that we can apply for and seeing if there are conditions to them is extremely important.
Well, you know, all federal grants have that equal and fair clause. So, you couldn't start charging admission to Dogtown for tourists and letting residents be in Dogtown for free.
Could I just interrupt for a second? I think, so we don't get too down in the weeds, this doesn't change the city's process for applying for grants. Any grant we apply for going forward, whether it's involved with these, this proposal or anything else, has to come through the city council.
I understand that, but part of their pros was that we could apply for grants, and short of providing examples of those grants and looking at the possible conditions, I'm not convinced that this is the right way.
Well, the, the Historical Commission would be glad to help. We, we're happy to collaborate with the city council, and we would be glad to do the research for you to identify possible grants, if you wish.
Councillor Nolan?
This is a question for both of you, from a few questions ago with Councillor Memhard. He had asked about putting a windmill up there, and that you said it wouldn't change anything, and as long as you didn't put it in the hole. But then you had said that the other issues that you consider being an asset by standard would be the commons, the Boulder Trail, and all the other areas. So, now, if we decided, or the city decided, or something happened, we had to put windmills up there in the common area. You, you're saying that that wouldn't affect the historical aspect--
I, I can, I can, I can answer that. The goal, the goal is not to damage the heritage if you can. If you have to, if the city decides that that's what it wants to do, you can pave it over. You can completely destroy it. If it were on the National Register, it would then be delisted from the National Register, but you have the right. If you have a historic house on the National Register, you can tear it down.
So, you are saying that it's not just restricted to the actual holes? It is restricted to everything that would be done up there in the common area, the Boulder Trails and so on and forth?
No, the, the only issue is trying to protect as best as possible the identified heritage. And, and that means, you know, literally not destroying it. But, if you have to, if it, if you decide, and for the greater good of Gloucester, we, we want to make a parking lot up there, you're legally allowed to do it if it, if you can do it for other reasons. I mean, if it doesn't violate any other existing statutes, but it wouldn't affect the national registry listing, except to delist it once it's destroyed.
It doesn't prevent the municipality from doing anything at all with its property. All it does is give an opportunity for people to examine or review what it is you're going to do and inform you. If you do this, this will, this is what will happen. This will be the consequence. This will be a negative consequence, and is there an alternative? Or is there some other mitigation that you could do that would make it less of a destruction of cultural heritage? And that's it. It would be a discussion. That's all.
So, basically, if we do decide that as a community, there's something that we need to do up there that does change the historical aspect of it, we have to go through that, I believe you said there's a 106 or 107 compliance on that. A third party decides whether, you know, they recommend it or not recommend it, and if they don't recommend it--
The third party is us, the Historical Commission.
I'm just asking a question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me, I, I, okay, go ahead.
Want to finish? All right, so in the worst-case scenario is we lose our hysterics, our historic status on us.
Right, which isn't that big a deal.
So, we're basically saying that inevitably, if something happens up there where we have to use the property, and we make a decision based on what the public's needs are, we're going to lose it anyways.
No, 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 no. I mean, you're only going to lose it if you completely destroy it. Can't we have some intermediate point between doing nothing and destroying it?
I, I don't think anybody in this room wants to see residential or commercial development on Dogtown.
Yeah, yeah, really. I mean, we're, we're trying to keep it the way it is.
Any other councillor questions? Councillor LeBlanc?
Thank you.
You've had a question already, so.
Once again, like I said, this, this is the application that the Historical Commission submitted. It is an amazing document. I urge every single person in this room, whether you're for it or against it, to take a look at this. I try to pride myself on as a local historian. There are things in there that I never knew, and it is amazing, so. But the one thing that it lacked is a vision of where you see Dogtown. Can you guys give us a, a general reference on where you see Dogtown in the future?
That's, that wasn't our job. That's a, that's, that's a planning issue, that's a citywide issue. We're, our focus was on the historic heritage of Gloucester. I mean, figuring out what to do with Gloucester is a big, big, big issue, and I, it's going to take all of us to figure that out. I, I, I don't want to answer that one.
I, I agree completely. There are a lot of ideas for things that could be done in Dogtown, things that would be very beneficial to the environment, to health and safety considerations, things that would be beneficial for passive recreation, for families to go up there and have picnics with their kids. And when I was a kid, I used to pick blueberries from horseback, from the high bush blueberries. They're, they're not there anymore because of invasive plants. They're, the watersheds have been so broken up that rare species have disappeared, of orchids and of a certain turtle whose name I can't pronounce. And those are things that could be remedied. There, so there's an environmental component that would benefit from this as well as the historical component. There's a whole list of things that people would like to do there, and some everybody would like, and other things people wouldn't like, and it would be up to the city and the public to decide what to do up there.
So, just to interrupt for a second, which is why, you know, we're doing this a little, a little bit unusually, because the question about what is our management plan for Dogtown, which goes beyond the national registry thing, is something that Mike is going to help us focus on a little bit, so that will come. Anybody else for technical questions at this time? We'll have other times when we want to. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Bill and Mary Ellen, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So-- (applause) So, Mike, if you wouldn't mind addressing us, as-- Thank you for doing this, and state your name for the record, please.
Michael Hale, Public Works Director. So, this is kind of a unique position for me. I've very rarely been at the podium as an opponent to anything brought before the city council, and frankly, I don't really see myself as an opponent of Dogtown at all. I do believe Dogtown is a special place worthy of protection of its cultural heritage, its, its historical significance, and its ever-changing environmental landscape. For generations, our community has held this land as precious. The incredible work of the Historical Commission through this and past efforts demonstrates the uniqueness of this area. When asked to weigh in on the nomination of, of this for the National Register of Historic Places, I simply asked, what is the purpose? What is the expectation? I'm still not sure what the purpose or expectation is. There's a Q and A that was submitted by the Historical Commission, it's dated 21419, it was redistributed at the last P and D meeting. There's a number of issues, and it basically says it's regarded as an honor and something to be proud of. I can agree. It would be an honor, something to be proud of. But it also states it affords, it carries no restrictions, requirements, demands, it affords no additional protection to the land now or in the future. How is it helping to protect the land? That was a comment just made, it's going to help protect the land. I'm unsure how that, how it does that. There is a repeated theme in the Q and A, it was mentioned recently, about how the National Register provides access to additional funding. We've seen this funding in the past. The Gloucester applies for many grants. Every week we're applying for a grant, comes from the administration of the council and is administered by staff. There are conditions on certain grants that are difficult to work around. Recently, we turned down a National Park Service grant in the tune of $250,000 at Stagefoot Park. It took local control away from our ability to control parking. It's a real thing. We couldn't have residents stick a parking in daily fee there. Is that important? Is it not important? I think it is if you use the park as a resident and you try to get in there on the weekend in the summer, you won't be able to do it. Could it happen here? It's difficult to say because we don't know what funding sources are being asked for. One of my concerns as director is two-thirds of the Dogtown acreage is watershed. Eleven thou, uh, 1,150 acres are granted by Roger Babson in 1931, which remain untouched open space shared by all the residents of this community. This nomination alone, as pointed out, does not change the distinction of this land from watershed to something else, certainly not a park. But again, it's, it's the unintended consequences of future grants that concern me. What will they do? How will they restrict us? Will they restrict us? It's, frankly, if it's not protecting the land, it's not offering anything to us, what's, what's the drive to this? But I do agree, Dogtown needs a more complete management plan. There was a number of issues that were raised by a number of different groups relative to Dogtown. And looking at a management plan, as you asked me, and Councillor Gilman suggested, that would be a good idea. Again, there is no management plan yet. We're throwing some ideas out that I believe a working group could certainly put together. An inventory of parcels, identifying the ownership in the area known as Dogtown, determine what, if any, measures are in place to truly protect this land. If it is determined that more protection is necessary, the administration, city council should take the appropriate action with the community input. Address the issue of past grant acceptance and what the city's obligation is for past grants. All corrective actions should be reviewed openly or used in caution while considering future grant funding. We've already been told by the Dog, um, one of the Dogtown groups that we're non-compliance of past grants accepted by the city. And they jeopardize future acceptance of grants. There's been a long discussion about the appropriateness, appropriateness of the current location of the municipal composting operation. Public Works is not interested in being not in compliance with the grant use or the purchase of this property, but also recognizes that there's a need for the service in the community. If the administration, city council, and citizens should determine the appropriateness of this location as not appropriate, excuse me, let's work to develop an exit strategy, develop something else or another plan in place for it. Again, I'm not opposed to this. And this management plan, once developed, should be members of city staff, including Public Works, community development, police, fire, city council, and the various citizens groups of the city, plus just traditional citizens. They should have an, some sort of input to what this management plan looks like, a living document that can evolve with us as our needs change. So, I guess the difference between the first presentation and my presentation, much shorter, I don't support the nomination of Dogtown to the National Register of Historic Places. I do agree it's a valuable historic and environmental asset to the Cape Ann, and it must receive the appropriate level of attention, protection, and perpetual care. And the only way to get there is a true management plan, because being part, being nominated at the Historic Register does not develop that plan. All it does is give us a gold star, and I'm not sure that's what Dogtown needs right now. I think it needs care. Priorities change. Budgets come and go. Twenty years with Public Works, 11 as Director. We've done minimal work in Dogtown in those 11 years. I recognize that. Various priorities come forward. We try to address them the best we can, just like the, just like you. As priorities come up, you bring them to the administration's attention, and it's different from year to year, month to month, season to season. And again, I don't think the nomination alone changes anything. I think it's been stated by the supporters of this and by me. But it's just, what is the, the funding source? And what does it do for us? The nomination does nothing to protect this land. We should do that ourselves, and it should remain with complete local control, decision making made by the members of this community, the administration, and City Council.
So, so before we move on, anybody, any councilors have questions for Mike, like you had for the Historic Commission? You don't have to answer them now. We just have all kinds of opportunity to ask, but if anybody has one right now? Okay. So at this point, could I have a show of hands who wants to have three minutes at the podium on these matter, whether it's for or against the registry and, okay. So.
Can I vote for the standing for Dogtown?
Uh, no, no, we're not going to do that now. We're going to listen to people speak their hearts, and we'll get to the vote later. So anybody who wants to speak for or against the National Registry, or in favor of Dogtown, or share a reminiscence of when you picked blueberries up there, you got three minutes. Would you please line up in the, right over here to the, my left and in single file?
Be respectful.
Yep. We're going to enforce the three-minute rule strictly and be respectful of, of your, of the other speakers and of the presentations. Would you like to have a few words?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Are we all set to go here?
Name an address.
Name an address, please, for the record.
Last twenty-odd years I've been the watershed.
Joe, name an address for the record, please.
May I beg your pardon?
Name an address for the record.
Joseph Orange, 16 Taylor Street, City.
Thank you. Go.
Last twenty-odd years I've been your watershed constable, up there dodging bullets, working day and night, picking people out of the reservoir dead. Donald Pick and I picked them up with a stick, and when he was murdered and robbed, and all these do-gooders that went there, their nostrils are too clean. They couldn't do that. The places are, it's just sickening to hear this going on, as far as I'm concerned. This is the Holy Bible. This, the General Laws, they're talking, not me. According to the General Laws, you're in violation of the watershed ordinance. And here we go. I'm going to read you an excerpt to understand just what the watershed is all about. The restrictions forever prohibit construction or placement of buildings. A watershed, a watershed is supposed to be kept in a pristine wilderness state. No placement of, cutting, removing, or otherwise destroying trees, you cannot do it. Grasses or other vegetation, the subdivision of premises, activity detrimental to drainage, dredging, removal of loam, peat, gravel, soil, rock, or other mineral substance, you can't even touch it. Walking is prohibited. If you really wanted to be mean, you could stop people from going on the thing. The, this, the, the, the law itself is meant to keep people out of here or to minimize human involvement. We're talking about water. It, that's the essential problem. We, the watershed is so important because, you know, we are reaching a point where we have to depend upon some sort of some, something to make up for the deficiency in the waterfront. We have to have a sufficient water in order to survive. This is, this document, you're in violation of the entire watershed. It's so upsetting to hear this. And I'll have to say this, my mission was to protect lives and property and enforce the watershed ordinance. And I will personally go to court, I will personally file suit if this thing continues and if we violate this. And I can assure you, Exhibit A, Your Honor, there it is. You'd be thrown out of court in five minutes. You cannot, cannot, cannot violate the watershed ordinance. It's here in the General Laws. Any lawyer in town will tell you, there it is. As far as Dogtown is concerned, how to get along for 10,000 years before we got here? It's supposed to be kept in a wilderness state. And that's all I have to say. We had better think carefully about this, about losing local control. You're losing local control. The worst thing you can have is someone from the government coming, I've come to help you. It's, it's something you better be careful of and think carefully. I think this should be an open forum. I think we should get out here. I've already gone over my, I've got to stop here. I'm trying to get so much done in three minutes, but we should have an open hearing. This is very important. In the meantime, I'll leave you with this thought. The watershed ordinance is put together to minimize human intervention. They can even stop you from walking on it, go up to the quabbin, go any other place. You say, what about you walk on it? We're pretty lenient, walk on it. And besides, my last word here, the, it says here, the, the public is allowed to pass and pass, said pass, for passive recreation only. You can go hiking, skiing, anything you do on foot, you're allowed to go in there. But as I said, you can't even touch a blade of grass. I wish you well. I have no ill feeling towards the Historical Commission. They're well-meant, but losing local control, you better be damn careful about that, because once you lose local control, you have a problem. Thank you for your time and your effort, and I'm still on duty up there. I've got a bum knee right now, but I'm up there, and I'll continue to do so because I have a lifetime warrant, and I'll continue to enforce that, that, the ordinance. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And speaking for the whole council, I'm sure, Joe, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it and rely on you. Thank you. Okay, next, name an address for the record.
My name is Bob Whitmarsh. I'm co-chair of the Historical Commission, also of the Downtown Development Commission. I live at 2 Blueberry Lane here in Gloucester. The thing I want to bring out here, a lot of good things have been brought out, but the thing I want to bring out here is that the approval is more than just about Dogtown in this case. Gloucester right now is a certified local government. It's a very important thing. Only about 25 communities in the state have this designation. What it means is that Gloucester has, has the opportunity to get 10% of the federal funds that goes to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. That is very important money. Thank you. Now, as far as getting grants, we are, when you're a certified local government, you, you are in line to get more grants for historic preservation, sets things at the City Hall and other, other properties, private and public. And what I wanted to say is that when you're using federal funds, it's optional. Tonight, you are deciding whether you want to be listed on the Historic Register. There are no strings attached to that. If you use federal funds, you can, you can determine that in the future. Now, this isn't just for this year, next year, or the next five years. This is for, for a long time. Future City Councils will be having the opportunity to decide if they want to get the funding, and if there are any possibilities of having any strings attached, then maybe they wouldn't want the funding, such as what happened with Stageford Park. So that has to be weighed out separately. This is not what you're deciding tonight. And I really would beg the councilors to approve this nomination. I, I do believe that the Historical Commission has some good people on, on the commission, and we're well-qualified to sort this out, and the recommendation of the Massachusetts Historical Commission, I believe, is, is an important factor. Now, if we don't approve this, now, if we go for something else, it's not going to be as easy. It, it, you know, for, for example, to get a matching grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for something else, if we're not friendly to getting a national historic listing on this case, we will have problems in the future. So I, I do think that this is just more about, this is not just about Dogtown tonight. This is about the future of historic preservation, opportunity for funds, staying a certified local government. That's a very important thing, and only 25 communities are, have that designation out of 351 communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel LeBlanc has graciously offered to turn his tablet around with the timer on it so you can see what the time's left. So, next person, name and address.
Yes, I can. Richard Quaitman, 10 Dennison Street. I come to you as an environmental professional with over 40 years of experience in land use management, planning, and evaluations. I've helped write National Park System Plans, was one of the co-authors of the first National Heritage Corridor in the country. The Essex Heritage Corridor is a direct result of our earlier designation. I'm more importantly a former member of the Dogtown Advisory Committee that came out with the 1985 Recommendations Plan. In that, the Advisory Committee, and I would laud your efforts to create a active management plan for Dogtown. It's long-needed, long overdue. At the time, we worked with the city, with the DPW, with the Mayor's Office, with Jimmy Marr from the Police Department, identifying properties that were at risk at that time. Ownership then, as now, was in question on many of these parcels due to the passage of time. But I'm asking you to support this activity. You know, there's concern about restrictions on grants. Well, we helped get grants for the city from the Land and Water Conservation Fund and from the Self-Help Funds. Were there restrictions? Yes, that land must be used for conservation. We are subject to regulations on all aspects of what we do. We're not going to pave Dogtown. No one in the city is ever going to vote for such a thing. Might there be other things we can do? Yes, active use, active management is highly advisable, highly needed, as was spoken of earlier, the invasive species, the deterioration of some of our archaeological resources. By this designation, there are no restrictions. We're not creating new, um, third-party reviews. We're already subject to them. I'm almost out of time. I have about 58 seconds. This designation is a recognition of the value of Dogtown to our community, to our, to Cape Anne overall, not just to Gloucester, but to Rockport. National Heritage Corridor of Essex County recognizes the value of Dogtown. I'd urge you to continue your support for Dogtown by voting positively tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, name and address, please.
My name is Leslie Dale Bartlett. I currently live at 21 Harbor Street in Manchester by the Sea, but I lived consecutively on the true island of Cape Anne for 46 years. I've loved photographing the Cape Anne quarries and the boulders of Dogtown, and I'm speaking to you now as a Cape Anne historian. And I'm aware that I'm addressing each one of you, but in point of fact, I'm here to speak as a poet as well, and I'm addressing the great-grandchildren of all of us. Because what we're talking about and what is at stake is a pride by a community and a way of coming together to preserve Dogtown. And I would love to see the headlines on the Gloucester Times tomorrow in 200 points being "Management Plan for Dogtown Proposed." Because it's with that that I support this application going forward, precisely because of the gold star. It has nothing to do with potential plans for me. It has to do with each one of us coming up to the level, to the table. So with that, I want to share three events to you of, of historic significance that I feel for you to bring into your decisions. The first is that 62 years ago, in the month of April in 1958, there were other City Councilors sitting in these chairs, attending to the same question. There was a group called the Dogtown Reservation Committee, making a presentation on what needed to be done in Dogtown. There was a group that said, no, leave Dogtown alone, nothing needs to be done. It was hotly debated, the resolution was turned down, and it took almost another 30 years for the Dogtown Advisory Committee to rise from the ashes and accomplish great things. Where are we now? We are the unintended consequences of a community which has forgotten to believe, to act in concert with a well-managed plan for Dogtown. Your great-grandparents walked into Dogtown at the turn of the 20th century. They picked blueberries and huckleberries to sell to summer visitors, and they walked the cattle up, and they were eight years old. When Dogtown was known as the heart of Cape Anne, children could walk into Dogtown unaccompanied and safely. I would ask you to think in your hearts, as I conclude here, how safe is it now and easy for young children or for adults to go through the cat-briars? I would hope that this council would see its way to a decision that would reflect on how a well-managed Dogtown can be preserved for our great-grandchildren, a decision that when they look back might warm their hearts at your actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. Next person, name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Christopher Leahy. I live at 67 Perkins Street here in the city. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Dogtown Advisory Committee, but I'm not here to speak for the committee, but just for myself, as someone who is somewhat familiar with Dogtown over the last 20 or 30 years, and very much interested in implementing proper stewardship there, which is not happening at the moment. I'd like to just address, just directly and briefly, the objections, of which there are two, as far as I can tell. One is the one that Mr. Hale has brought up with the Stageford Park scenario, and that basically in essence is that if, through this designation, we are fortunate enough to get grants, and of course, we will be looking for grants from many sources, whether this designation comes through or not, and if those grants come through, be they federal or state or whatever, there are strings attached. The city, the City Council, the mayor, have full authority to reject that grant, okay? Case closed, problem solved. That is just as much true with this as with any other granting situation. It's not complicated. The second objection that's been raised is that through some incredible marketing scheme, that hundreds and thousands and tens of thousands of people after this designation are going to race to Dogtown in busloads and trainloads, and there will have to be huge parking lots and visitor centers and paving of the trails and things like that. That, my friends, is a fever dream, okay? There is no precedent for it, whatever. I've just finished up with 45 years working for the Mass Audubon Society, in which land protection, stewardship, visitor services, grant applications, et cetera, were part of my daily routine every single day. And I can tell you that while we have a few sites, such as Drummond Farm, where, yes, we, we invite and manage for large numbers of people, people from all over the state and the country are not going to come to Dogtown to look at our magnificent boulders or our cellar holes, which you can barely find even with a good map. So I believe these, these objections are, are basically, are bankrupt, and I strongly urge the council to vote in favor of this, which is basically a good thing. We have 35 designations already in Gloucester. None of the bad things, as far as I can tell, have happened, and potentially, many good things can happen as a result of this designation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Charlie Crowley. I live at 19 Biskiehead Point. I'm on the Open Space Committee, and I'm the Open Space Committee's representative on the Dogtown Advisory Committee. I'm speaking for myself and not for either of those two committees. You know, there's been so much misinformation going on around that it's hard to see the real issues and understand why the National Registry designation might help. I want to start I want to start just by dispelling a few of those myths. The first myth that the Gloucester Times keeps saying is that Dogtown is a 3,600-acre conservation area. We should understand that it really isn't. Gloucester's portion of Dogtown, which is greater than the historic district that they're talking about, is about 1,900 acres. It's about 180 separate lots, about 150 are public, 15 are owned by nonprofit conservation organizations, 15 are privately owned. These public, the public uses most of the privately-owned parcels, but there's no formal easements or use agreements over this land. Much of the land has, much of the land in Dogtown has either no conservation protection or relatively weak conservation protection, meaning that it's possible that at some point land could be developed or diverted to another use sometime in the future. And I'm not saying that's going to happen. I certainly don't think that this body's going to do that. To become the conservation area everyone seems to think we already have, we, and that specifically means you, need to put meaningful conservation protections on this land and work to acquire the remaining private parcels, especially those most at risk for development. It should be noted since 1986, the city has not acquired any land in the Dogtown area. Fortunately, Estes County Green Belt has been monitoring parcels when they come up, and when they're at risk for development, they've been purchasing them. They've been doing great work. Second myth I want to talk about is the grants. Grants that the city may get as a result of the National Registry Designation could have strings attached that would restrict the city's future use of the land. That's the myth. That ship's already sailed. Much of the municipal land in Dogtown was purchased with state and federal grants that already have these restrictions. In 1985 and 1986, the land adjoining Dogtown Road was purchased with self-help grants, and some of the watershed was purchased with HUD grants. We may now be complaining about these restrictions, but understand that we wouldn't own this land without them. It's worth noting that without grants, we wouldn't own Lanes Cove, Long Wharf, Red Rocks, Dyke's Watershed, Marlborough Road Conservation Land, Poles Hill, Magnolia Park. In addition, we wouldn't have been able to afford the repairs and rehabilitation of Burnham Field, Newell Stadium, and also St. Peter's Park. Okay, the third myth, and this is one that I hesitate to say because I think we're really trying, but that's that Gloucester is a good steward of its public lands. I think we have some problems with it, and I think we should address them. Some lands acquired for conservation purposes have been siphoned off and used for other purposes. The Compass Facility is an example. It's on land that was acquired for conservation purposes and by law can only be used for conservation-
Carly, you've gone over the three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just let me finish up. The point is simply that if we can, that we, that we have work to do, and if the National Registry is a way to get this work done, is a way to afford and pay for this work, then it seems to me we should do it. I've got some problems with it too, but I think in the end, net-net, it's a good thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person, name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Susan Quaitman, and I live at 10 Dennison Street in Annisquam. I'm a former landscape preservation planner and now a silk painter at Ten Pound Studio in Gloucester. I am the former director of the Mass Department of Transportation's Open Space Program. Together with Green Belt, I preserved the green corridor of Route 128 from Exit 18 in Beverly up to Exit 12 in Gloucester by acquiring conservation easements 150 feet in from the highway right-of-way. So the result is a permanent green corridor enjoyed daily by people. I first got to know Dogtown over 30 years ago, when I mountain biked there with my husband, Tabe, and his brother. And over the past 10 years, I've been walking into Dogtown with friends, trying not to get lost. Last year, I also moved with my husband, Rich Quaitman, just down the road from the Carter Reservation in Dogtown. I'm here to say that after carefully reading the information put forth by the Gloucester Historical Commission, it makes complete sense for Gloucester to go ahead with the National Register application. There are no federal or state strings attached to a National Register nomination. It does nothing to alter land use. It doesn't mean that there has to be a visitor center or parking lots. A National Register designation does allow our city to apply for grants, which could help with trail maintenance, management of invasive plants like cat briar, and habitat restoration and watershed protection. The city can pick and choose which grants to apply for. All grants come with stipulations, and if the city doesn't like certain ones, we can choose not to apply. In conclusion, the decision to pursue the National Register application is a win-win for Dogtown, for Gloucester and for Cape Anne, in the eyes and heart of this landscape preservation planner and artist.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next person, name and address.
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Gardner Hansen Winchester of the Second, 62 Veterans Way, Gloucester. What is good for Dogtown? What is good for our city? I suppose it all depends on your definition of the word "good." For me, it means protecting the arguably most important and cherished woodland on Cape Anne and preserving its history to date. This history of Dogtown is a history of America that dates back to colonial times and beyond. With too few exceptions, most other early settlements have been built over, and the history has lost development. Look at Boston, New York. The NHR will help give us the tools to preserve that history. Dogtown can help answer many questions of people who laid the foundation for the greatest nation on earth. Old Sturridge Village, Plymouth Plantation, Jamestown Settlement, and other living history museums have researched Dogtown to help them find clues and better understanding of the history of our country. Because we still have it. The cellar holes, the walls, are still right where they were built. But without better protection, there is little stopping someone from plowing it under. As the demographic of Gloucester changes, from the simple people who built this city and made its history to one where big money is coming in to turn into a waterside retreat playland, access to our history is gradually being blocked, and the past is being erased to confirm to their whims. Our laws are not that well-prepared. Some high-priced Philadelphia lawyer, paid for by this influx of wealth, is going to find a loophole, and developers are going to swoop in and take it all away, as has already been done at Blackburn Industrial Park, Gloucester Crossing, and other places. The city will do little, if anything, to stop it, as they stand to gain a lot in tax revenues that no one is getting from empty space right now. I think the NHR, while not perfect perhaps, is currently the best option to preserve Dogtown as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before you speak, just one, just one note to the, anybody who's speaking tonight who has written remarks and wishes to have them, Dana's taking notes, but she's not getting it verbatim, so if you wish to have your written comments entered into the record, just leave them on Dana's desk. Thank you very much. Could you, name and address, please?
Noel Mann, and I live at 3 Peierme Lane. That's in Gloucester, not far from the hospital. I have long been interested, I serve on the Open Space Committee, and it's in that context that I'm particularly concerned about Dogtown Common and the lands that were purchased with self-help aid. They do have Chapter 97 protection, which means the city can't develop or, I mean, in principle, without going through the legislature. We met last Thursday for the first time in nine months. Our prime, the Open Space Committee, our primary responsibility is to produce an OS plan at seven-year intervals in order to support applications to state and federal agencies. The last plan was submitted in 2010. At our meeting, we were introduced to representatives of the MAPC, which has been funded for and is now responsible for producing the update and revision of our open space plan by 2020. It's a two-year process, but in a year's time, we're expected to put together an inventory, which is more comprehensive and informational than what was previously done. The 2010 version gave a woefully inadequate and even misleading inventory of our open space, and we're now charged with defining each lot according to its values, its management, the level of protection it has, and any state or federal funding the city received for the acquisition. Any honest report on the Dogtown lots purchased by the city in the 80s, all except one of which are included in the historic designation application, will expose the failure of the city to comply with the terms of the self-help grant which enabled the acquisition. Supporting the Historic Commission's application will signal that the city council has a care for the preservation of Dogtown and would like to see better management of at least some of our nominally conservation land. I hope you will vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Name and address for the record.
Sal Frontero, 14 Warner Street. Initially, I had no position on this particular designation. I researched it, and I soon found a side. I researched whether there was any negative impacts to this designation on public lands. I found nothing. I also researched a bit the opposition's position. First off, that it's going to cause a huge influx of visitors. Again, I found nothing. And also, I, you know, part of the opposition is based on speculation and conspiracy theories about members of our committees and volunteers, and I found no credibility to that whatsoever. The only, I guess, potential negative would be the strings attached to grants that's been talked about ad nauseam already, and again, the answer there is simply say no if you don't like the strings attached. Well, one thing I thought was interesting is that right in our backyard, there are very similar properties that have this designation. The Middlesex Fells, 2,200 acres, three reservoirs, been on the National Historic Register since 1990. Lynn Woods, 2,200 acres also, with three active reservoirs, been on the National Historic Register since 1996. Also, the, on the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation website, I found a listing of their properties that are on the National Historic Register, many of which are in their natural state undeveloped properties, 48 of them here, again, not all them analogous to Dogtown, but many of them are. So there are many, many properties nearby. Lynn Woods is protected by the Friends of Lynn Woods, which might sound a little bit familiar. Again, it's been designated since 1996. My question is, it seems like everything that's being done here tonight is being done on speculation, on assumptions, yet we have real-world examples. 20-plus years that properties have been on the National Historic Register that are very similar to Dogtown. And my suggestion is that this, that the council delay their vote so they can talk to some of these people. Why base it on speculation? Why base it on conjecture when we have properties that have been designated? We can talk to people. We can find out what is the effect of this. Has it been detrimental? We don't know any of that right now. I think it would be, we'd be remiss in voting on this without investigating that more. And I also, speaking of Lynn Woods, I found an article from the North Shore Magazine from 19, excuse me, from 2016, 20 years after the designation. And I found this quote interesting. It said, "Given its fascinating history," and it has a very similar history to Dogtown, "and natural beauty, it's hard to believe that more people don't know about Lynn Woods." This is 20 years after the designation. So again, I think the council should take its time, get facts. We don't have any facts. Get information that's out there from people who have lived it in properties that are very similar to this one. So for that reason, if you're at all inclined to vote no on this, I would say, you know, get more facts first so you're more fully informed. The facts are out there. There are properties out there that have similar designations we can learn from. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sal. Name and address for the record, please.
Clay Kern, 28 Green Street. I'm a biologist, as well as a hunter, fisherman, and a citizen of Gloucester. And I wanted to thank all of our presentations tonight. They were both very overwhelming and with a lot of good information. I do support both proposals to declare it as a National Historic Registry, as well as develop a plan going forward into the future for Gloucester. I see no reason why we shouldn't. I mean, as has been pointed out many times tonight, it's almost a purely symbolic measure. It doesn't do anything to restrict what Gloucester and our citizens do there. Any restrictions that we do put in place have to go through this room. There's absolutely no reason that we should not do that. It's simply just a tool that opens doors for us potentially. Whether we open those doors or not is completely up to us, and that's basically all. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Next speaker, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Phil Schwartz, 4 Old Farm Lane. Excuse me. I am a co-leader of the Cape Anne Sunday Morning Hiking Group. There are about 270 people on our mailing list. We generally have one to two dozen of us on any given Sunday out in the woods, so we're not by any means overwhelming the natural landscape. But there are a significant number of us. I'm speaking for myself, however. I'd like to make, contribute three observations and one exhortation to this discussion. The three observations, some of them other speakers have mentioned, but I think they bear reinforcing. The first is that National Register designation is not inconsistent with city management plans, of which Mr. Hale alluded to. It's not an either-or. Both are beneficial, both can be pursued, and they do not conflict. The second observation is that the National Register designation does not require us to approve any grant proposals that entail undue restrictions or conditions. So similar to the Stageford Park grant proposal, if there are undue restrictions or conditions on grants that are proposed as a result of this, it's perfectly within the city's domain to turn them down. And the third observation is that the National Register designation would help attract grants that are consistent with preserving Dogtown's character. What it will do is give a direction and an overall goal or theme to the grant-making that would ensue. The exhortation is that when you do make your decision, you do so on the basis of facts and not on the basis of rumor or hypotheticals that don't have a basis in fact, and I trust that you'll do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person, name and address, please.
Hello. Christian Kishida, Marmine Way, Rockport. I'm a forester by trade, natural spy hobby. The things I enjoy doing in Dogtown are mountain biking, cross-country skiing, fishing, and hiking. Dogtown needs to remain a shared-use trail system, completely open to all respectful, non-motorized trail users, and remain open at night for those who choose to recreate after dark. At this time, everyone here can enjoy those freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person? Name and address for the record.
Hi there. I'm Dan Greenbaum. I live at 318 Concord Street in West Gloucester. And I appreciate the patience with which you have to listen to all of us this evening at this increasingly late hour, so thank you for that. Close to 40 years ago, from an office on Main Street, I published a book called The Wilds of Cape Anne. It identified five places to walk throughout Cape Anne, and Dogtown was at the heart of that book. And it was a key, a key component, really, of the entire concept, not just the nature, but the history that was there. What I have seen over the years is not that Dogtown is the same, and it hasn't changed very much, and doesn't need any further thinking or planning, but it has started, it has slowly and steadily deteriorated. Somebody else mentioned you can't even find the cellar holes anymore. There's vandalism in various places. There's trash that gets dumped there. There seemed to be a suggestion here that there's an either-or, that we could do the National Register, or, well, alternatively, let's just do a management plan. I think that's the wrong way to approach this. And with all due respect to DPW Director Hale, I heard him talk about a management plan, but I didn't hear him committing to saying, "We're going to go after this and do this," and frankly, it's not fully his responsibility to do that. So I'd like to make the suggestion of two things. First of all, you can't have a management plan unless you also have a reason for it to be there, and the National Register will help strengthen- to be there, and the National Register will help strengthen any management plan you do. It’ll help any management plan get grants, get support for that. But that management plan will not happen unless the council takes two actions tonight. First, I would urge you to follow the Planning and Development Committee’s recommendation and support this designation. And secondly, urge you to call upon the city to come back to the council in a set period of time with a very specific plan for how it’s going to implement a management plan, how it’s going to put the resources together to do that, what kinds of things are necessary. And I think the Dogtown Advisory Committee, the Historical Commission, and others, I’m sure, would be glad to work with city officials to do that. And I really hope you’ll do both of those things tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next person? Name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jeff Brown. I live in Rockport. I have a prepared statement I’d like to read this evening. I was raised in Gloucester near Dogtown. I am here today because of my concern about the effects a National Register listing would have on Dogtown and the city in general. I have come to know Dogtown both through family outings as well as an elementary school student at Beaman School. At Beaman, it was our teacher, the late Charlie Thomas, or Mr. T., who held road races around the Goose Cove Reservoir. He also led an annual trek to Whale’s Jaw. This is a large geological rock feature in Dogtown. My passion for Dogtown has continued into adulthood. It is a large wooded area that allows for exploration and an opportunity to spend time in a quality, in a natural setting. I have been following this nomination process since November of 2017. In doing so, I learned there are many facets to this nomination. Today, I would like to focus on one of them, which is the drinking water supplies of Goose Cove and Babson Reservoirs. Incidentally, the Goose Cove Reservoir is the largest drinking water supply in the city. Of note is that the city is seeking to get grant funds that can be associated with National Register status. These funds could be used for projects that would change Dogtown’s landscape, such as controlled burning, habitat restorations, and perhaps even the creation of a replica era home. These changes would draw increasing amounts of people into Dogtown. It’s this large increase in human traffic that could challenge the city’s ability to protect drinking water supplies of the Goose Cove and Babson Reservoirs. Additionally, organized events in Dogtown seem to go against the Babson deed, which calls for the area to be used for passive recreation purposes only. Ensuring the protection and quality of these drinking waters should be of utmost importance to the city. I would like to ask the council not to approve this nomination application. If the council does approve, then I would like to ask that the city hold a moderated forum, followed by a citywide vote. A citywide vote would be an inclusive and collaborative experience, one where the community would decide on the future of Dogtown. To that end, I have two petitions I’d like to present to you today. One is signed by citizens that have an expressed interest in having a moderated forum for Dogtown. The other is signed by those who would like to see this issue as a referendum question on the city’s ballot. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts today. I hope that the council makes the best decision for Dogtown by not allowing this National Register nomination application to move forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Next person? Name and address for the record, please. Speak right into the microphone.
Darrell Jackson, 20 Eastern Point Road, Gloucester. A lot of points I was going to touch on have already been touched. The GHC mentions that the National Registration Status will not do anything to change Dogtown. However, they’re stating that we want to restore Dogtown. We want to undertake, to quote, “undertake landscape restoration and maintenance for public safety and public access.” So I’m not quite sure what not changing Dogtown means by that. To undertake landscape restoration seems like a broad stroke and gives unmitigated access to do whatever. If it’s talking about burning or bringing back the blueberry patches you picked when you were a kid, I’m pretty sure Dogtown was forested before English settlers came here. Then they deforested it, then it grew back again. So where are you going to restore Dogtown to? Just the way you like it or the way somebody else likes it? Seems like a lot of special interest there. People talk about trash in Dogtown. I just drove up the extension today. I see more trash on the streets of Gloucester and on the extension than I’ve ever seen in Dogtown. Homeless people and encampments in Dogtown. There’s a reason why people don’t have homes in Gloucester. When the price of a starter house is $500,000 and you don’t have affordable housing and you have a drug epidemic that the city government covered up in the Angel Program, you’re going to have homeless people. The first time I was in Dogtown was with my children. I lived here for 20 years. I’m not a native, and I never will be, because you have to be born and raised here. However, they brought me to Whale’s Jaw, and I was amazed when I saw it. I wrote a song about it. I’m not going to sing it here because it’s six minutes long, but people that know me have heard it, and it’s epic. When I was at Whale’s Jaw, it changed me. So I see my time’s running out. In Dayton, Mass., in 1862, there was a minister who traveled into the woods for 30 years, and he carved on a rock, and it was found by people that used to explore the woods. And I’m going to end with a poem that he carved on that rock. “This rock I visited so oft, I wish here remain. When yon brick shaft on leafy sprague overlooks no more the plain, and let the trees around it grow to stripe its sides in shade, as on the quiet August days when I these letters made.” Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, name and address, please?
Hi, I’m Nick Holland, 11 Jevica Lane. Excuse me. And I’m here to speak on behalf of the Cape Ann Trail Stewards. We worked in support of this application. We prepared a lot of the maps. We wrote letters to the Mass Historical Commission, and we wrote letters to the city council asking that you move this project ahead. We are motivated because while we think the city and the citizens of Gloucester have done a great job managing Dogtown, keeping it open since the 1980s, we think this would provide the city with some more tools. And every year, the city is being asked to do more and more, seemingly with less and less, so I think having access to more grant funding or giving more impact to grant funding outside of the historical umbrella would be worthwhile. But I really wanted to talk about what I see here as the three big concerns that are outstanding tonight. One is local control. One is visitor traffic, and the third is continued access to Dogtown. And I’d like to pick up what Mr. Frontero said. The best example we have of what we might expect is just down the road at the Lynn Woods. 2,200 acres, similar size watershed, owned by several municipalities. It’s been in the program since 1996. It’s still open to mountain biking. They have not been overrun by visitors. As a measure of the local control that they’ve maintained, one of the cities that owns part of the reservation has been able to trade land on Route 1 in order to facilitate expansion of businesses along there. So that’s quite a bit of local control they’ve maintained. Lynn Woods is not open to hunting, but that has nothing to do with the designation. Again, an example of local control. They decided it’s not appropriate despite the size of the reservation and a healthy deer herd. So I would encourage us to look to Lynn Woods. There’s a ranger there named Dan Small. He’s been there, I think, before the designation. His contact information is on the front page. When he’s not in his truck on the reservation driving around, he’s dealing with the Friends of Lynn Woods. He’s an employee of the Water Department. I think he’d be an excellent resource to address these very meaningful concerns we all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Name and address.
I’m Lori Hager. I live at 54 East Main Street. I’ve lived in Gloucester for 18 years, and I use Dogtown walking and hiking on a regular basis. I’d like to ask for your support for adding this to the National Register of Historic Places. I’ve given this a lot of thought over the past several months on my own. I’ve done some research. I was on the fence for a while. I didn’t know if it was a good or a bad thing. But after giving it some real thought and listening to things here, I’m firmly on the side that it would be a useful and a good thing. There’s nothing I’ve heard that indicates that we give up local control by doing this. This is just a tool, and it’s also an honor, and it’s a recognition of what Dogtown is in terms of history and culture and so forth. I think that it is a gold star, as somebody said, and I think that is very compatible with a management plan if one were to be developed. In fact, I think that designation would be helpful to such a management plan, perhaps in terms of getting grants or for other reasons. And as other people have pointed out, if you don’t like some of the strings attached to these grants, well, then you don’t have to accept them. So I would like to ask for your support, and I hope that we get this great designation for Gloucester and we can add it to all of the other, I think somebody said, 35 other historic places in Gloucester. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Next speaker, name and address, please?
Laurel Tarantino, Commonwealth Ave., nervous, unprepared. I wonder what the coyotes would say. Sorry, nobody mentions the animals until they’re in their backyard and they’re upset with them because they hurt their pups or some other kind of pet. I think it’s just, it’s not about gold stars and grant money. I think it’s more about nature, and I think we can get back together as a community and do something on a grassroots level instead of applying for thousands of dollars. Let’s get some hamburgs and hot dogs and get together as a community and clean up the spring that we destroyed with the... I’m sorry. My head. I’m very nervous, speaker.
Don’t be nervous. Take your time.
It’s a physical thing. We destroyed the spring with the compost facility, and I think we need to bring that back, and I think we should need to do it on our own accord and not with the federal government’s money. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Laurel. Name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Eric Hutchins. I live at 45 Poole’s Lane. I’m actually one of the only private property owners that would be affected by your proposition here this evening. And so I have followed this in great detail from the very inception of it. I have about 13 acres of land in the middle of Dogtown that was included within the proposed historic district. And again, I’ve really beat it down to a pulp, everything I could find. I’ve yet to find any reason not to move forward with this between Cape Ann, Rockport, and Gloucester together. I’m a mountain biker. I’m a cross-country skier. I dare anyone in this room to ever propose taking those away. I don’t see that in the cards, even though there’s some webpages right now. There’s a lot of scare tactics going on, saying that there’s people proposing to restrict things, and I don’t think there’s anyone in this room that is even thinking that or proposing it. So I think it’s really poor that there’s been some scare tactics that really aren’t documented anywhere to get people scared. Ms. Tarantino that just spoke, I think that was fantastic. The thing she said about local people getting involved, the number-one reason I support this, I do granting for the federal government. This isn’t about grants for me. That’s a byproduct. The number-one reason for doing this is you’ve got hundreds of people that have been doing and want to do stewardship. It’s not a gold star. That’s nice. It’s stewardship. It’s people that are willing to be involved, people that are willing to work for you, willing to work for the DPW, to write grants or to implement projects or to simply go out there and lead walks with people so that they can understand these awesome resources that Cape Ann has. I think there’s, in the long term, a lot to lose here, and it’s going to be a long pathway to ever get a management plan, and I fully support the idea of a management plan. This is one very small piece of that puzzle. Management plan’s going to be brutally hard. If you think passing this is hard, oh, I dread that. I also was the chairman of the Rockport Watershed Protection Committee for, I believe, six years, and I worked a little bit with the Gloucester DPW because of our cross-watershed issues, working with our Department of Public Works. The number-one thing we found over and over again on projects that we worked on that’s often missing is not the pipes, and it’s not the money to build, and it’s not the money to pump, it’s stewardship. We need people to care about these locations, to support the DPWs so that we do have better water. The more people we have out there caring, the better these resources will last in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please? Name and address?
Anne Rheinmeyer, 16...
Anne, speak right into the mic.
16 Pine Street. I have had the pleasure and privilege of 16 years in planning locally and regionally, and as many years in developing preservation-based economic development. And David and I were instrumental in initiating and undertaking that culminated in a nine-state National Historic Trail, Washington Rochambeau Trail from Newport, Rhode Island to Yorktown, Virginia, that commemorated the winning of our independence from Great Britain. So none of that has been destroyed by hordes of tourists. There’s tourist interest, but mostly there’s documentation, guidance, and access of documentation when there’s a National Register designation. It’s not control, it’s dissemination of information and pride in our heritage as a country. So I don’t see how we could fail. And I also feel that our Historic Commission is extraordinary. We have, I think this is a national treasure right here, and the expertise and the hours that have gone into this, to be overlooked or bypassed or sabotaged, to me, is just a horrible waste, not only of expertise, but of our own citizens’ hours. And these people were recruited and authorized to advise on these issues. So I think it would behoove us to pay attention and respect and follow some of that advice. The other thing that strikes me is that I welcome Mr. Hale’s proposal for a management team, and I don’t see that as mutually exclusive. I see that as additive, extremely important, on-the-ground troops, along with yet another layer of awareness, oversight, and authorization for our stewardship of a national treasure, Dogtown being that. So I think we have opportunities for raising our level of function rather than risking being controlled. So I advise moving ahead with this proposal and making the most of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Step right up. Name and address for the record, please?
Hazel Hewitt, 16 Haskell Street, Gloucester. So I’ve only been a resident of Gloucester for seven years, but I basically love everything. Cape Ann’s an extraordinary place, and it’s obvious that Dogtown is a unique area. I think all the hard work that’s gone into documenting Dogtown’s significance in order to put the application for nomination to the National Register... to put the application for nomination to the National Register, from everything that I've heard, it means that anyone who might be asking for money in order to, even if all you do is maintain the way it was described somewhere, you know, where you just hike the trails, you see the whales draw, even if no visitor centers, no bigger parking lots, there is still money needed for culverts where you get water that you don't need. So because of everybody's comments that you do not have to take any grants that have strings attached, I'm convinced that there will only be outside people deciding if local people make that decision. I completely agree with the lady who said we need to get together, we can do a lot by ourselves. And to me, a management plan would be the second stage, and if the Dogtown Advisory Committee has input, and Mr. Hale's plan, and people who care get together, some people will be arguing for maybe educational centers, and other people may feel, no, that spoils it. Together, we can work out, you know, how to deal with it, but the more people care, the more people who are working on it, the better. And I'm convinced that being nominated to the National Register will be a good thing. It basically puts on record all the hard work that's gone into why is it so significant? And I support the nomination, and I would like to hope that you will too.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Cindy Dunn, 93 Wheeler Street. I'm also here tonight as a member of the DAC. The DAC has formally endorsed the nomination. I'm also here as a citizen. I've participated in many cleanups in Dogtown, on Earth Day as part of the Great Gloucester Cleanup, as a Mut Mit volunteer, and I love the place. I moved to Gloucester about 20 some-odd years ago and quickly discovered Dogtown because I had a big dog, and I fell in love with it. I commend the DPW director. I think he does a phenomenal job in the city of Gloucester. But Dogtown is sort of unique in that it's the wheel that doesn't squeak. You know, the beach shows its stresses that require immediate attention, roads show their stresses that require attention, but the forest holds in its stresses. It's not very visible when you first go up there that there's a lot of invasive species up there. It's not immediately apparent that we've lost some bird species that were around when there were blueberries up there. It's not readily apparent that there may be some fire danger up there because it's just not, it doesn't show it, you know? But when you really start to look, the woods, all woods, need attention. And for us, and you know, as myself, I've followed this nomination process since the very beginning when they had a public hearing here more than a year ago. And then there was another public hearing when the report came out. I'm not a historian, but you don't have to be a historian when you read that report to see that Dogtown is incredibly significant from a historical perspective. The cellar holes, the common roads. I use Dogtown because I recreate in it and stuff, and I have some experience with grants in a professional capacity. I have gotten grants to build affordable housing. A lot of the same restrictions, especially with residency requirements that you saw in the Stage Fort Park, apply to a lot of those types of grants. However, I think that that's comparing apples and oranges. For me, if I'm a grantor or a grantee and I have two applicants, and one says, we have this parcel of property that has national historic significance, it needs attention, it has invasive species, it needs some fire roads cleared, and then I have one over here that needs all those things, but it doesn't have that significance, I may be inclined to pick this one. And that's the reason why I'm for it, is when you're doing grants, you look for any competitive edge. And as many people have pointed out, if there's a restriction on the grant and it doesn't apply, then you don't accept the money. As you know, you all accepted the grant to do the study. The study that discovered all the historical significance in Dogtown was not done by the Historical Commission, it was done by professionals. I wholeheartedly support this. I also support the DPW's director's assertion to get involved in the management plan. A couple, three years ago, the mayor appointed the new Dogtown Advisory Committee that I'm on. We've been working on updating the 1985 plan. Nick Holland has been involved with the North Gloucester Woods Study that identifies the parcels that the DPW director wants to work on. Chris Leahy, 40 years of experience at Mass Audubon, has pointed out, he's working on the ecology piece of the 1980, the revised management plan. There's lots of people on these committees with lots of knowledge, and I hope you'll listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next person, please. Name and address. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Monica Lawton, and I'm from Rockport. I've been walking in Dogtown for 20 years, and with Phil Schwartz, am currently co-leading the Cape Anne Sunday Morning Hikes, which is, as Phil said, a group of about 200, close to 300 people now, most of whom are from Gloucester, I might add. And we hike in and around Dogtown every Sunday and really have grown to appreciate it. I also had the privilege of accompanying the PAL archaeological team on their reconnaissance tour of Dogtown. So I know and love Dogtown very, very much, and I urge your support of this nomination. We heard it suggested earlier that perhaps you might want to delay to begin, to get some information from other sites that have this designation. Lynn Woods was mentioned several times, a wonderful area that is on the National Register. But I would also suggest that if any of those sites felt any negatives in the designation, I would think they would quickly delist themselves, because there's no obligation to stay on the National Register once you are on the National Register, and if it's not working for them, then you would think they would undo it, so to speak. Other than that, you've heard all of the arguments tonight, and with respect to change, we've heard over the course of these months of a number of possible changes to Dogtown, real fear of change, roads going in, restrictions on activities. And I am involved, or a member of, all of the stewardship organizations that currently work to maintain Dogtown and are stewards of Dogtown. I have never once heard of any plans, or any real plans, for paving roads, smoothing trails, building visitor centers, putting up big directional signs, or restricting activities. I've not heard a word of it. So Dogtown stays in local control. The only changes we've heard about are possible changes in the name of good stewardship, the changes to perhaps bring more of the unprotected land into conservation. And we've heard about invasive species and control of watershed, et cetera. So these would be good changes if people want them. There is no one to dictate what happens except the people of Gloucester. And this does dovetail with the idea of a management plan. You heard Cindy mention Dogtown Advisory Committee is already working on updating the management plan. And Gloucester recognized years ago in the 1980s that Dogtown can't be left alone. It was in a sorry condition before that first plan was established, and years went by and it was at the risk of returning to that former state. So I think everything's very positive. I think the National Register designation can only help, and I would urge your support.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Catherine Goodick. I live at 10 Dogtown Road. Let me repeat that again. I live at 10 Dogtown Road. I'm here today to speak against the proposed National Register for Dogtown Common. Let me ask each one of you who are sitting in this room, have you ever driven up Dogtown Road to the common, to the compost pile? Who in this room has parked, walked, biked, run through Dogtown Common, coming up Dogtown Road? I venture to say most of you in this room have, and why do I ask this? Because all of you traveling up Dogtown Road are actually crossing my property and my driveway. So there is property markers on Dogtown Road, if you look out right in front of my driveway, that shows where my property is. And yet, even with that, we have not been asked about this major proposed change to Dogtown. If any of this goes through, there would be a major impact to our lives, but we don't even get informed about this unless I'm reading it in the paper. My husband and I are lifelong residents of Gloucester. My husband is here tonight as well. We built our home 24 years ago in Dogtown. We paved to have Dogtown Road paved and repaved and repaired, all that to be passable for everybody who comes up the road. Since that time, we have watched the road continue to erode and is not conducive to the amount of traffic that is parked along this road, and especially for the two-way traffic that goes up. The compost area for the city was moved there in about 1990 timeframe to a temporary site in Dogtown. We've all talked about that today. It's still there. It was supposed to be temporary. On any given Saturday, when the compost area is open for business, I cannot even get out of my driveway. I say that because I want you to understand, I'm not sure where this whole National Register is going, but if it's going up my road, I have a real problem with that because it impacts my life and my family's life there. We feel very custodial obligation for living there and very, very blessed. My husband and I have spent many hours cleaning the debris along the road, and the teen drinking spot, I'm there every weekend. I'm cleaning up the beer cans and bottles and posting it for people to see. I've been in contact with Mike Hale several times, and they know me quite well because I called the police even this past Saturday night. I am not alone in this endeavor, nor do I profess to be, but I do have a value in keeping this natural area as it is. Despite what other people have said, it does not need to become another Sturbridge Village. If you give them an inch, they will clearly take a mile. I tell you these issues because I do not understand why the Historical Commission is pushing for this designation through without contacting residents who live in Dogtown Road, who pass our house, or the residents of Gloucester who this land was left to by Mr. Babson. And how can the commission say they are concerned about the preservation, but when you asked about a windmill, that was fine to put up a windmill in Dogtown? That's illogical to me. But as you are fully aware, if it is not or when any work on my property, I must contact you, the city, the Conservation Committee, and my abutting neighbors. My property is surrounded by conservation land. We respect that and abide by that. This means that we have property that we pay taxes for that I cannot use. I'm okay with that. But again, the same thing should be afforded back. Why is it that we have not been afforded the same respect? You're now encroaching--
Catherine, you've gone way over.
Okay. I have 39 seconds there? No? I'm over? Okay, but I'll have one more thing to say.
It's over.
I'm going. This past Saturday, my husband and I were walking through Dogtown. It was interesting to note that the old piece of equipment that had been idle for years is gone, that the stump area that has been gathering large trees for years is also gone, and the compost area has taken out several dump trunks full of rich soil. Surely, there is a plan in place, and I would venture to say--
There's a lot of people still waiting to speak, Catherine. I'm going to have to ask you to please stand aside and let them--
And councils, please listen to the residents of Gloucester and leave Dogtown Common as it is a natural resource for all to enjoy its natural habitat. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Name and address, please.
Z, Z Sepala, 92 Granite Street, Rockport. About four or five minutes ago, one speaker here quoted, "There's no one to dictate except the people of the city of Gloucester." I was going to start my speech in a discombobulated way, but I think I'll say something right off that was the last statement of the chairman of the Rockport Selectmen two months ago, and that was, "If anything is going to be changed, that has to come in front of our desks and this board, and the people here who I think I know you all pretty well, are not going to let that happen." So I think there's probably a difference between Gloucester and Rockport, maybe on who gets to dictate. Anyway, tonight, I want to thank the Gloucester Historical Commission, because I attended a lot of their meetings as a Rockporter when the MBTA came down here about five or six years ago and gave the city of Gloucester its plans to take down their Anasquam Bridge. I made a comment that time that I asked what they were going to do with the old parts, and they said they had no use for them, so I said, gee, it'd be nice to save them for some kind of historic preservation, and Counselor Cox picked up on that and recommended that it go to the Historic Commission. So I've had a chance to go and sit in their meetings, and I know they're good people with good projects, such as demolition delay, recognition for home preservationists that do that type of thing on their own, and the cemetery lot cleanups, and there's a lot that they do good, and I think, most importantly, there's an awful lot that they have to contend with in other pressures that are against them. But on this event, or on this, what have I got? How many? Two? Thanks. On this particular instance, I think it could stand to wait. And the reason why I think it can stand to wait is that this is an entirely different type of historical preservation. It's a natural, huge acreage that has stood the test of time for at least 300 years without any significant encroachment by anybody. And in contrast to what Rockport, how Rockport looked at this, they asked, they asked the people that were for this, to say, how does this compare with the nine properties that we already have on our Historic Register? Well, every one of those properties is a man-made structure that is subject to encroachment, subject to destruction, and needs protection. I think that the fundamental thing to my mind is that, I've spoken to Jeff Brown, and he's told me that the ultimate decision on this, whether it goes on the Historic Register or not, is up to the 15 people or so that live in Dogtown.
Okay, Zeke, your time is way up.
Okay. Well, so anyway--
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next speaker, please. Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jim Ugoni, and I'm in, live in Rockport. I hope you can hear me back there. I know it's been difficult hearing all the speakers, but I sit on the Rockport Historical Commission, I'm actually the chairman of it, and as a body, we supported this effort early, and it isn't because we're college-trained historians or preservationists with the degrees necessary to qualify us for being on the Historic District Commission. Our responsibilities deal mostly with the appearance of the homes in these Historic Commissions. It's very frustrating and very difficult, but we find ways to accommodate homeowners. What I wanted to tell you is, rather than writing a book about trails in Dogtown, what I do have at home is a book entitled, "In the Heart of Cape Anne: The Story of Dogtown", written in 1896. They were writing about Dogtown 120 years ago. It meant a lot to the people in Gloucester to write this story. And I'm not saying this to persuade anyone to vote one way or another. My point from a historical perspective is, the Pawtucket Archaeological Lab did a great job. You guys did a great job bringing in, I read the study. But what I will say that's important, that may add some body of information, particularly to the sportsman or others, and including the woman who just spoke about her property being trounced upon. At the Rockport meeting, what I added, I thought, which was valuable input, had nothing to do with historic, except that I thought the most legitimate concern by some of the attendees at the Rockport Selectmen meeting were those who lived on the roads that lead up to Rockport and were afraid for the parking, and they have a very legitimate concern. I also sit on the Rockport Parking and Traffic Committee, and it's, I'm a glutton for punishment, but I will tell you this, we do a real good job with the chief of police and the town administrator and-- We do a real good job with the chief of police, and the town administrator, and another volunteer, and we try to collectively resolve parking issues. And the people that are going to be at the end of Squam Road, I spoke to them aside and then made the issue come to the Parking and Traffic Committee to convince them that these people need protections. And they stood up to that and said they would. They're probably going to come away with this with better protections than what they have right now. But lastly, the thing that I really want to say, and I'm trying to get to it, is that one of our historic districts is called the Main Street Historic District. It goes from Dock Square to Five Corners. It's one of the 11 sites in Rockport that sits on the National Register of Historic Places today. That means every one of those homes are homes of which a body that's recognized for imposing rules and regulations would have a great deal to say if their home was on the register. And in fact, it has zero. The only thing I can do is tell someone, or we can do is tell someone that their home is on the register, and hope it strikes some personal chord of, huh, my house is really historic. My home is in this. But to give you an idea how much it doesn't matter, is that the Shaylen Loue Performance Center was torn down in the heart of the Historic District and is built back up. So there really isn't a ton to be afraid of. And I'm only telling you, you know, the difference between factual and actual is actually what I do with boots on the ground with decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, name and address, please.
San Favolo, 318 Western Avenue, Gloucester. I am imposed to this for the simple fact that if you get the federal government involved in anything, they're going to screw it up. Let the city work the way it has been working. I mean, I hunt up there, I fish up there, and there's a lot of hunters and fishermen here. We want everything status quo up there. Just leave everything the way it is and let our Historical Commission work on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Name and address, please.
My name is Mark Ames. I live at 55 Car Track Drive, but not full-time. I'm a New Hampshire resident. I go to Dogtown going up Quarry Street. That's the street that was built by my great-great-grandfather because he built the quarry up there. And nobody's mentioned what a bad job a number of our antecedents did in tearing Dogtown up quarrying granite. I'm afraid I have to take some responsibility for that. I am a hunter. I'm a fisherman. I'm somebody that appreciates having Dogtown. I pick blueberries there. I hunt there. I've enjoyed Dogtown my whole life. I don't see that there's anything wrong with a group of community-minded people having gone to great effort to try to set up something that might be beneficial for everybody involved in the future. And I support this effort because of that. I don't believe we need to take a federal grant that has strings we don't need in this area. That would be silly. I wrote many federal grants over my life, and I didn't choose to pursue any number of them because of the strings attached. And I don't think that's an issue here. I think that there's a general feeling that having wild land in our midst is important. And I don't think anybody would argue with that. Now, what I view as being, you know, I don't mind cat briers. I'm not real fond of them, but I don't mind cat briers. It's part of what I experience if I go hunting. I don't presume to suggest that Dogtown needs to be the way it was when I was a kid, although it was nice. But I do think that the idea of trying to maintain some protection for our wild land is really important, and anybody that's willing to step up and work toward that needs some support in doing that. And I appreciate that you all have demonstrated support for doing that, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Peter Leathers. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but there's a lot of good information that was presented here. I'll make this brief. I took a couple of little notes here during all this discussion. For people that know me, I'm the facilities manager at Varian Semiconductor, the largest employer in town, and I'm also a sportsman, club range officer. I do not represent either of those organizations, just I'm speaking as a taxpayer. There's a couple of good points here. It's like, from what I can see right now from my own observation of this, is that the only reason we would actually try to get on this registry is to get federal funds to a local problem, right? Or a proceed problem. I actually hike in there all the time, and I don't see it as a problem. You can't fight Mother Nature, right? A couple of other things is, if you actually go to the Lynn Woods website, you know, I know it's been used as an example, there's no hunting, no fishing, and it's only open during the day. So, I mean, that kind of information wasn't really accurately presented here, so I think that we should really either reach out and dwell into some of these facts before we just start voting on it, or vote no, because in my mind, this is a slam dunk. There's no reason to basically, to change something that has persisted. We're not going to break the rocks. Nothing's going to, the rocks aren't going to die. You can still hike and find the rocks. And that's part of the challenge of working and enjoying Dogtown as it lies. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Next speaker, please. Name and address.
My name's Mary Devaney. I live at One Holbrook Court in Rockport. I am the trail steward for New England Forestry Foundation, which owns a large section of conservation land in Dogtown. And this organization supports the National Historic Site. We believe it will be beneficial in raising people's awareness of the importance of this area. And I've heard all the arguments tonight, and I don't find any of them persuasive. I'm on a number of committees, and we have grassroots people out there trying to clean, trying to clear, trying to get things open. And I think if you just leave it, we know what will happen. You can walk in there now and see where people used to dump cars and old washing machines. And so in '85, I believe, was when a lot of cleanup took place. And if it is, the idea that we can just leave it and it's all going to be fabulous, I think is a really poor idea. It takes work, it takes consciousness raising, and it takes caring. And I think the people who have spoken to that tonight have made it very clear, and I certainly hope you will approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? One more. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Keith Palazola, 57 Western Ave. I don't think I'm going to take three minutes. Yeah, I just came here. I've been up in Dogtown my whole life, enjoyed it, probably since 1982. Phil Salzman, he taught me about Dogtown years ago, and we've used it in every possible way, from hiking, biking, and, you know, studied everything around there. I think I used to blueberry pick up there. Wasn't going to come tonight, wasn't going to say anything, but I was compelled to come because I wanted to learn more about what's happening here. And tonight, it seems like what I've heard is that it would be a great gold star for Gloucester. It is. We love that. But as far as, I think that what I expected to hear in the presentation was more of a plan. What does it look like down the road? Okay, we got a nomination. We put that forth. Well, I do want to know what's next. What I've heard was, we can do anything. Well, the anything kind of scares me with a place that's been pretty much pristine for years and years and years. And yes, I commend everybody that helps out clean. I've helped out clean up in there as well on my own. I've met many individuals that helped clean. I really like the idea of small government. I really like the idea of keeping the federal government out of it. I don't think we need the grants. I think we've done a great job grassroots efforts. I think that if we could, the Dogtown Advisory Committee, again, great job. I just don't see really what the vision is. The only thing I had said, the only thing I've read over the past few weeks, anyway, is that, you know, there was a document, I believe from 1985 or such, that showed a visitor's center. No, we know, I know we're not going to get the visitor's center. We've got that, you know, but what is the plan? What are we really going to do there? I heard about fear mongering? Well, let's hear the plan. I understand this meeting is for just the nomination, but the nomination leads to other things that we don't know about, and I haven't really heard. I've heard a little bit about restoration, applying for grants for restoration. I don't necessarily see the need past the grassroots efforts that Gloucester has done with the people. And for the most part, like I said, I don't see the plan, and I would urge the city council here to look more for the plan into the future about what the Dogtown Advisory Committee and the Historical Committee, what they would like to put forth as far as grants, what they would be looking to get. More of a detailed plan. I think that would help everybody to understand more about, you know, what we want to do with the area. We've heard leave it alone, but again, I've also heard grants, and I just want to hear more. So I would say either wait on the vote, or, yeah, I don't know. I would say wait on the vote somehow, some way. If you have to vote, I guess you do, but that's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Any other takers? Okay. I have to say, this has been awesome. So, thank you. Oh, okay. Name and address, please.
My name is Doreen Watson. I live on Honeysuckle Road, 6 Honeysuckle Road. I just learned about this when I drove around the Rotary a few days ago, and I saw Dogtown public hearing, so I looked it up on the Gloucester Times website. And so then I started calling a few people, you know, that I know and that might be interested, and no one seemed to know anything about what was going on in Dogtown. So I'm kind of, I read about and heard Mr. Hale's argument, and I think I kind of am on his side opposing it, but I'm not sure. I'd like to have time to read that document, and I don't know where we could, you know, find it, to read that document that you spoke about earlier. And I just feel like there's a lot more people here that are for it, that oppose it, and I'm thinking that maybe it's because there's a lot of Gloucester residents that don't know what's going on. And I think it, maybe we could delay. I don't know if the vote is tonight, or, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But maybe delay it so that more people can have input as to what's going on, because it's the future of Gloucester. And I think it's a little bit different than, like, historic designation, the, you know, City Hall, it's like a massive area in Gloucester, so it concerns me a little bit. And another thing I'd like to bring up that, I don't know if anyone has noticed here, I'm not an expert on environmental conservation, but I was a painter, and I studied with an artist, actually from Rockport for many years. His name was John Terralack. And so I observe nature a lot, and I look around Gloucester, and I don't see a single tree, healthy tree, nowhere. I don't know if anybody else has found a tree in Gloucester that is healthy, that isn't dying. We're losing all the trees pretty much in the city if you look around. My neighborhood, Honeysuckle Road was beautiful when I first moved there, filled with trees, gorgeous. Washington Street, everywhere. And it seems that the trees are being cut down because they're diseased, insect disease. Vines, you go along the back shore, go along West Gloucester, and vines are just totally choking the trees everywhere. I recently went to Connecticut, to Mohegan Sun, to see a concert, and that hallway driving, and as I looked, you know, like I usually do being an artist for years, and by the way, I noticed this 10 years ago, it isn't something that just started to notice now. And I constantly say to my husband, there's something going on, there's something going on with the trees, they're not healthy. And so he's been listening to me for 10 years. So finally, tonight, he said, you know what? Why don't you go? You're so interested in trees. This is about trees. It's about Dogtown Common. Go and tell them how you feel. So I think we have a serious problem going on, and I don't know how we're going to fix it, because it's so far, I mean, how do you fix it?
So you've gone over your three minutes.
I've gone to Dogtown, I've gone to the compost, and not a single live tree.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, any communications?
Yes, there are. I was handed a note from a woman who was in the audience, but she wasn't able to get up and speak, and it's Linda French, 8 Hutchins Court. She disagrees with the listing on the National Register for the reasons lost of authority over Dogtown, another layer of bureaucracy, removal of standing dead trees, would increase traffic, increase real estate to pay for it. We don't have the infrastructure to support the increased population. In opposition, I believe you received all these communications, was from Bob Gillis, 31 Saywood Street, Joseph W. Butler III, 12 Ledgwood Road. In support, we heard you have the communications, but they also spoke tonight, was Noel Mann, Nicholas Holland, president of the Cape Anne Trails. Stewards, Monica Lawton of Rockport, and Phil Schwartz, Kathy Tar, Donna Palizia, Marilyn Arnold Sussman of 13 Youngs Road, Renee Barrett of 5 Claridan Street, Richard Callan, family of Gloucester and Rockport, Paul McGarry, 301 Cobblestone Lane, Michael Ronan, 18 Centennial Avenue, Maury Ronan, 18 Centennial Avenue. We have two communications, not for or against, but they gave their opinion. Ron Cole of 11 Lilac Lane, Belmont, New Hampshire, suggested a referendum question on Dogtown nomination to weigh public opinion. Martha Fonsworth of Gloucester expressed concern for the railroad tracks that run through Dogtown and the public trails that are near it.
Thank you. Okay, so any counselor questions of anything that you guys have heard or want to have anybody else speak? You better not. I'm just joking. Any other counselor questions? Counselor O'Hara?
I want to commend the Planning and Development for doing such a wonderful job in reviewing this. But I'd like to, I think there's enough information. Mike Hale's letter came after the meeting, and I'd like to put a motion on the table to return this to Planning and Development.
So we will do that after we finish the public hearing and close, and we hear the committee report, and we get a motion, then you can do whatever you want. If you want to make a motion then, but not now. We're having counselor questions right now.
Understood. But we can bring it, you know?
Not right now. When we, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Cox?
It's not so much of a question, but of clarification. I would like to be clear that CPA money comes from the citizens of Gloucester, and we have funded the purchase of property through CPA with Essex Greenbelt. So to say that the city has not purchased anything for conservation is incorrect. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Hecht?
Yes, I, it seems like, of all the discussion, I have great respect for the Historic Commission and the Dogtown Open Space Group. Great job. I have great respect for Joe Orange and his stewardship. What I think is, I'd like to ask Mike Hale for a few moments here. In order to get something done, I think you need to have a vision, which I think not everyone agrees on, and I'm not sure everybody has one, then that precipitates a plan, then you execute the plan. So I would like to take Mike Hale up on his offer to create a plan based on a vision. And my question would be to Mike, you know, what would be the general categories of that vision, the plan, how it would be accomplished? How long would it take to do that so that we can create a plan to figure out what resources we might need, including the potential for National Historic Register, if that becomes, you know, one of the bullets we'd like to have in our gun? So I guess that would be my question, Mike, is, you know, how do you see this plan developing? How long might it take? And can we understand a process so that we can come back here after the correct public input and then make some decisions about this?
I believe there's a management, I believe there's a management plan that's being worked onto something we are ready. Taking a look at the last management plan, looking at its successes, looking at its failures, looking at what's been done, what needs to be done, what hasn't been done. I mean, I think it's difficult for me tonight to sit here and list all the components of that. Obviously, you have environmental issues, you have cultural issues, you have historical issues, you have the watershed. So there's a number of very big categories that would need to be, you would need to dive into. What are the competing uses? What are the competing uses? Can you hunt and trail walk? Can you mountain bike? Whatever they may be. And to fully understand that's going to take some time. There's no question about that. It's not something that's going to happen for this, you know, it's not going to be a quick process, I can tell you that. Because it has to be right and things that are right sometimes take a lot of time. But again, we got to work on it. I mean, again, a living document, you don't have to finish a plan and have it endorsed by the council to begin working on it. There's some lowering hanging fruit that should be worked on today. Start with that. I'm sure that answered your question, but trying.
I was, I was hoping to give a skeleton of a timetable, whether it's, you know, 90 days, 180 days, 270 days, that says, you know, we're going to try to check off a whole bunch of things from legal to what's really legal to do in a watershed. I mean, as you say, there's several categories of questions here.
Well, I think it's development priority list first.
Right.
If we're talking about protection of this area, what's not protected? What levels of protection are out there? How could we further protect these lands if we deem it necessary? Again, I don't, I don't have the answers to these if we should, but if we should, if we deem it necessary, what measures would be taken place?
I guess my question is, if you had to estimate how long it would take to do a job that we could then bring back to the people and say, hey, here's what we figured out so far and here's, here's what, here's
I hesitate to give an answer to that, Counselor. I don't mean to interrupt you. I mean, we, again, a year ago, we started an evaluation of watershed vulnerability to climate change. We're not done with it. It's a, it's a big undertaking and it requires time. It requires people to get together and meet. It's not just done in a, in a staff meeting. If we're going to have outside volunteers, it has to be done to accommodate people's work schedules, family schedules. Summer's coming, you know, oftentimes these meetings get pushed off until September because people take vacations in July and August. So, I mean, I think a draft in the fall would be a reasonable expectation, but it's going to be a very rough draft and it's not going to be complete, that's for sure. Maybe a framework.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Holmgren, you're, you're on.
On a motion by Counselor Lundberg, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the City Council endorse the application of the Gloucester Historical Commission to submit the City of Gloucester properties collectively known as Dogtown for consideration for listing as a National Register of Historic Places as an area of historical significance through the U.S. National Park Service.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded. So we can have some counselor discussion at this point. Was there, did you want to make an amend, an amendment, Counselor O'Hara?
Yes, I, I'd like to put a motion on the table to return this to Planning and Development for further review.
Second.
So moved and seconded to return it to Planning and Development for further review. So we will deal with that motion first. Want to comment on that?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor LeBlanc, why don't you comment on that?
I mean, we sat here tonight, we listened to everybody in the room, we've had social media outreach, we've heard from the DPW, we've heard from our constable, we've heard from the, the Historical Commission, we've heard from the, I mean, what else are we going to hear from if we bump it back to Planning and Development? I mean, we've had all this dialogue tonight, I don't know what more dialogue we're going to get out of another meeting, putting it back on to PND, except for holding the meeting back for another two weeks. I'm not going to support it going back to PND. I think we've all done our homework. I know I've done my homework. It's all here in front of me with all this stuff here, reaching, reaching out to people, talking to people, reading people's social media pages and, and, you know, I think I'm ready to vote tonight and I think the majority of us are ready to, we're ready to vote tonight and I think we should.
Okay, great. So on coun, Anyone else on Counselor O'Hara's motion to send it back? Counselor Holmgren.
So there are a lot of well-informed opinions in this room, a lot of people who have been doing research on Dogtown way longer than I have, enjoying it and caring for it. And I agree with Counselor LeBlanc, there's been ample opportunity for us to do our homework. I certainly have. I'm very excited about the management plan. I look forward to hearing more about that, although I certainly don't want city administration to feel like they're under the gun. I agree with Mr. Hale, we need to get this right. And I'm also relieved to have heard that if there are negative aspects to having a National Register designation, we could simply delist the property. I do agree with Mr. Frantaro and Mr. Holland and with others who have supported a delay so that we can get more information. With such a huge decision to make here, we should not be operating in a vacuum. I think we need to do some fact gathering up the line. So I would support postponing the vote in order to look to Linwood's. And I agree with Counselor O'Hara, if we need to bump it back to PND, I would support that, although we certainly could do this as a committee of the whole as well. So that's my opinion.
Anyone else on Counselor O'Hara's motion to bump it back to PND? Counselor Cox?
We very well may have done our homework, but we've been inundated this evening with a plethora of new information. And I have no problem kicking it back to PND for more review. I've been on the Linwood website. There are a lot of restrictions, there's not one mention of it being on the National Registry. I had to actually go to Google and Google that to confirm that it is on there. They have a lot of restrictions, so I would like to speak with the people that operate that and ask them pros and cons regarding their designation and find out if that's the case. I also think that Mr. Hale's idea of creating a plan and having a plan before we do National Registry, I think is a better idea. Doing it the other way is kind of putting the cart before the horse. If we don't know what we're doing with the property, how do we expect them to assist us with doing anything with the property? So, I mean, this motion, this whole thing could also be withdrawn without prejudice and put on the back burner until we have more information. I don't want to press it into a week and a half of trying to gather information before PND next Wednesday. Or not even a week and a half, but to try to get all this information, especially over the course of a weekend. I have the city budget coming up, I just don't have the time and resources to dedicate to doing this. And two of my other committee members are also going to be very busy with budget time. So I just don't think that we can do everything we need to do in the week that needs to, before PND gets a chance to meet. Just my opinion.
Counselor Emhart, did you raise your hand?
Yeah. I, you know, I'd be interested in taking a vote tonight because I think that we need to honor the good work that the Historic Commission has done and that they've done their homework. It's not clear to me that there's sufficient votes to support our application tonight, but I think it would be helpful to them to get that feedback.
Anyone else on Counselor O'Hara's motion? Counselor Hecht?
On Counselor O'Hara's motion, I agree with Melissa. It's, we just heard Mike Hale say that it's, you know, he'd like to get a plan together by the fall. To me, that's a critical element of this entire thing. What are we trying to accomplish? Then bring the resources to it and be at the National Register or not. So I would say, I don't know, I would, just on the motion, and I think I should keep my comments of the motion for now, I would be against the motion because I think it's too quick and we won't be able to do what we need to do and justify, and do justice to all the effort that's been given here. Thank you.
So you were talking about Counselor O'Hara's motion to send it back to PND?
That's correct. I would be against that motion.
Yes, okay. Anybody else want? I, I'm against that motion too because I sit on PND and Counselor Holmgren and I and Counselor Gilman, who's recused herself, I just can't imagine what more we would do with the question of the National Registry. I can imagine us doing a lot of work on the management plan and what that would look like, but as far as the National Registry, I don't, I think we've heard everything there is to hear and I think we should vote on that tonight. So I'm not in favor of Counselor O'Hara's motion to send the question of the National Registry back to PND. So that's the motion. The motion by Counselor O'Hara is to send the, send the proposal to apply for the National Registry back to PND for further consideration. So is this a, it's just a simple, simple majority to send it back? So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So then we need a show of hands. How many want to send it back? Two. And how many want to go, say no to? Okay. So Counselor O'Hara's motion fails. Now we're back to the original motion as articulated by Counselor Holmgren. And that is the motion to endorse the application by the Historic Commission. And so we'll hear from counselors on that. Counselor LeBlanc, you've got your hand up.
Yes. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I don't think anybody is wrong this evening, being in opposition or being in favor. I think this is a good dialogue. It brings Dogtown to our forefront and, and it's got the, the door open for us to have future discussions. We've heard from some very well-renowned people that have a lot of history in Gloucester. Like I said, I, I kind of consider myself a local historian, but after reading the, the, the application, I was blown away. You can find that on the city website. It's very interesting to read. We heard from our constable, Joe Orange. You know, these are our watersheds we're talking about. This isn't just a swath of land that we are trying to put on the National Register. This is our drinking water. This is our sustainability. This is our life. This is our future for our city. And if anything happens to that, where are we going to turn? We heard from Mike Hale earlier, he's opposed to it. Mike's been in the city 20, 20 years, hell of a lot longer than I have and a hell of a lot longer than I want to be. We heard about some speculation and whatnot. You know, the, our watershed's going to be in this designation. It shouldn't be, okay? This is city-owned land that was designated by Roger Babson, you know, and, and part of, part of Roger Babson's deed says here, it should stay as a natural park and bird sanctuary to be known as the Nathaniel Babson Sanctuary for the use of enjoyment of people forever. So I think that's pretty well, pretty well protected in the deed. Also, the deed says that the old cellars on said lands outside of said reservoir shall be left untouched. So we shouldn't be poking, be poking around in these cellar holes or whatnot. We heard, we heard a gentleman talk about, you know, what state of Dogtown do we want it in? Do we want it before it was Dogtown? Do we want it back to when it was Dogtown? Do we keep it where it's at now? We heard about invasive species, you know, there's, there's wildlife that lives in this, these areas now. If we start deforesting to bring it back to where it should be, which I don't know what it should be, you know, that's, everybody's a different opinion. Should it be pasture lands? Should it be back to a Dogtown community? Should it be, you know, natural forest, which it is now? You know, we, we heard from Mrs. Tarantino about grassroots community effort. I think that's a great idea. All of us are here now. If everybody pitched in, then we don't need grants, you know? I'm thinking down the future where we're sitting up here, we're educated about grants and looking at the fine details and we had somebody look at fine details about Stage 4 Park, I know it has nothing to do with it, but what if a future council or a future administration overlooks a grant and just says, well, that, that'll be good, you know? And now there's strings attached. I don't want to plan for that. I'm not voting for this tonight. I, I think, you know, everybody in this room, from Gloucester, from Rockport, from Manchester, from New Hampshire, we really appreciate your opinion. I was up to date on all the social media fodder that went around. The majority of it was against. And I think the way Dogtown is now is perfect. I go up there all the time. I have no problem navigating through the trails. It's clean. We had a gentleman speak up here tonight. He posted hours of, of video on social media. Not a problem walking around. Wildlife, you know, if you want blueberries, you can buy them at the supermarket, you know? So I'm going to, I'm opposed to this tonight and I am not supporting it.
Anybody else have a comment on the proposal to vote for the National Register? Counselor Hecht?
I just want to thank everybody again for all the effort, but I think it's wise to apprise the parties of what happens if this doesn't pass. If it's withdrawn without prejudice, there's an opportunity to come back. I think we've got a couple of options here. One of the options is, this can go to a vote, it may pass, it may not pass. I don't know what's going to happen there. The other thing, Mr. President, is would be possible to table this. Is it possible to make a motion to table this until the DPW generates their plan? If that's not a possibility, then I would love to apprise the people who have made this application that I believe there's a two-year period, if this fails, that they won't be able to come back for two years and re, and, and come for a vote again. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of what the technical aspects are of, if there's a vote for, a vote against, how it all works. Thank you.
So we have a motion to, on the table to recommend the City Council endorse the application made by the Historic Commission. Roll call? Okay. So why don't we do a roll call, just, just because? So I'm going to vote against this and, because I believe that the impetus to have a designation on the National Historic Register must come from a management plan. It is the management plan that will inform us as to whether this is a good idea or not. Some of the things that came up tonight that we need to consider that we haven't considered in a long time, and I'm particularly concerned about the watershed issue and, and how we control that. It's obvious that the, there's great historical significance in Dogtown. As Counselor LeBlanc pointed out, the, the archaeological study is fantastic and it really, and it brings together not only the current archaeology, but a lot of references. You'll see the bibliography on that thing is pretty awesome as well. The, you know, if, if what we get out of this is a discussion about what to do with Dogtown, then I think we've really succeeded. And, and so I think that, from my mind, that would be the route I would like to see taken. So I'm going to vote against the National Registry application. Counselor Cox, did you want to talk?
Yes, thank you. I am also not going to support this, this evening. I think, I want to thank you guys for doing so much work. There's a lot of information in the application, but I believe that one of the biggest pieces that was missing was collaboration with the departments in the city to get more support for the application. I don't know where that fell apart, if it was a lack of guidance, not, I just feel like this application came before, or came to us in a negative manner because it wasn't followed through on the guidelines that the city requires. I think had this not been brought to our attention, the application would have gone straight to the registry without our support. And I just, I just wish there was more cooperation between the board And I just, I just wish there was more cooperation between the board and, for example, DPW, because I think there would have been a lot of guidance offered to you. I know it was brought to my attention before it was brought forward to us officially as an application that was already in the works. So, I'm sorry if I'm misinformed about that, but that's how it was brought to my attention. And then, I feel like we all needed to fight to get this before us into a public hearing. I do hope that we continue the discussion and working with Mr. Hale to form a plan and provide better stewardship. I know, for one, I'm going to look into the privately owned properties and find out, you know, what layers of protection, I feel like this is kind of an onion, and find out what layers of protection are already there and what we can do to provide more protection without the restrictions that we don't want to see up there. I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Nolan?
I do want to thank everybody for coming out and working on this. It's been a long time, even though it may seem like a short time to some people. We've heard from a lot of good people, a lot of good stewards of the community, Charlie Crowley, Dick Holland, always involved with trying to make things better, the Dogtown Advisory Committee, their cleanups, there's a million things that happened for the right reasons up there. But unfortunately, I can't find one reason to vote to designate this as a historical spot at this point. I think that it's been an area that's been protected already by the city. We keep talking about a management plan. I think that that's definitely going to happen, although it's not part of this hearing. I just, on the merits of what I've read, learned, and met with people and talked with people, I can't support this tonight, but I do want to thank everybody for their time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Memhart?
I'd like to say that I think that you've accomplished part of your goal by putting this in front of us, getting this response tonight, and having this conversation. I think we owe you that great debt of gratitude for all the, we would not have been having this conversation if you had not come before us requesting that we make this application. I would have supported the application going forward because I think that that's part of a step, and in lockstep, with a management plan. I think they go together. I don't think they're exclusive. I think they work together, and I hope we'll come around to that in due course, but there's clearly additional public process that has to go on to get the public involvement and buy-in in the work, the good work that you've done. I think we've all learned a lot. I think Dogtown's been reinvigorated as a result of your efforts, and we need to just make sure we don't drop that ball for another 20 years, but carry it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors? Counselor O'Hara?
I want to mimic some of the statements made by my fellow counselors, but I think tonight, there have been enough questions raised, hence the reason for me to move this back to PND, which was not acceptable. But there's enough questions raised by the speakers, all of which, you know, seemed to be very well-educated. The application or form was extremely educational. You know, looking at the history of Dogtown, as far as reading the form, it reads of when settlers first landed on Cape Ann, that they went to Dogtown and they cut the timber, the oak trees, from Dogtown, hence the pastures that were created by the clearing. And they tried farming, and it wasn't very fertile soil, as I recall, but, you know, Mother Nature's returning, it seems to be returning it back to what it was. Obviously, it's going to take probably hundreds of years, but I think Mother Nature has a way of taking care of herself. I think man, you know, we've proven that we can be kind of destructive, but Mother Nature tends to clean things up. With that said, I'm sure the DPW Director, Michael Hale, who has his heart in the city as well as Dogtown, will, you know, keep an eye. Joe Orange, who's been doing a tremendous job likewise, and there's a lot of eyes on Dogtown, but with the fact that there was, there's been a lot of questions raised, and I just can't be supporting this tonight, and I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to move this to where it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Let's do a roll call.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Hecht?
No.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
No.
Counselor Lundberg?
No.
Counselor Memhart?
Yes.
Counselor Mem, I'm sorry. Counselor Nolan?
No.
Okay. Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Okay. So, the city council motion for the endorsement of the application?
Did you get it, Counselor?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Go.
Okay. The city council motion for the endorsement of the application of the Gloucester Historical Commission for the listing of Dogtown as a National Historic Register of Historic Places fails on a vote of six. Six in favor, one, no, six opposed, two in favor, and one recused.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to just take a two-minute recess, because we do have some other city council business, but please come right back, counselors. We want to get out of here by 11:00. All right, we're back in session. We're back in session. Counselor Gilman? Counselor Gilman? Let's go. Counselor Cox? I don't want to have to go beyond 11:00.
Yeah, no, we won't.
So, let's not, we don't want to go beyond 11:00, so let's go.
No, then we have to vote to extend.
No, we're not going to.
We don't want to do that. Let's go. So, Madam Clerk, call the next order of business.
Next order of business is for council vote, the decision to adopt.
No, we got to do vegetation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public hearing 20, okay.
Public hearing 2019-20, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Section 24, Vegetation, Article II, City Plantings Committee, by deleting Article II, City Plantings Committee in its entirety.
Open the public hearing. Anybody to speak in favor?
What?
Anyone opposed? Any communications?
None. None.
Okay, any council questions? Good. Close public committee report.
Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Vegetation, by deleting Article II, City Plantings Committee in its entirety. An iso move.
Second.
Moving seconded.
So, we've had these committees come before us. There is no member sitting on this now. I went into the mayor's office, she agreed. We have the generous gardeners, we have backyard growers, we have all these other people. So, we're going to delete it from the ordinance, and it's defunct.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye, thank you. Next, next order of business?
Okay, next article is, well, next matter is the decision to adopt special city council permit, 2019-003, Washington Street Number 742, and I'm not going to read the sections.
No, Counselor Gilman, you want to move the adoption?
Just decision to adopt.
Okay. Yeah, she's back with us. Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Roll the vote. Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Hecht?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lundberg?
Yes.
Counselor Memhart?
Sure are, yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
The motion passes on the decision to adopt. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, next, Counselor Cox, you want to say something about downtime development or next time?
The DDC would like to thank DPW for their wonderful holiday decorations and banners over the winter, and we look forward to the spring flowers if it will stop snowing.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent, excellent report, Counselor Cox. All right, anybody else want to have anything to say? Great job, everybody. Great job. You guys are awesome. Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me.
Yes.
Make it quick.
Oh, right. No, we do have one piece of business. We're going to sing?
Where's your candle?
I don't have a candle.
I've been quiet the whole night. I'd like to wish Jen Holmgren a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. No, please.
Happy birthday, dear Jen. Happy birthday to you.
Okay. All right. Yeah, all right. Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.